... Please, all nations of the people. The pledge of allegiance is in the life of the United States of America and is to be remembered for its existence, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on, please.
Mr. Cracker?
Here.
Mr. Cracker?
Here.
Mr. Cracker?
Here.
Here. Need approval of the agenda?
No move.
Second? One second. There's been a request by trustee Cracker to move his items earlier from the agenda for the new projections, Dan. Not him or any?
I've got a question, too.
Yeah.
Village engineer.
May I hear you a little bit?
So.
My fact is, here. On paper? Close. Motion carries. Need the approval and release of the minutes of the board trustee rating board meeting held April 21st, 2008. The motion?
No move.
Second? Move or second? Any discussion? Any discussion? Yes.
On page four. The way it states is that trustee Kaiser made a comment, this recommendation to take this money from the road funds and apply it to the V farm drainage issue. That was just a personal opinion, a recommendation of his. There was no motion. It was just a recommendation. We would have to amend the pledge to do this. We amend the pledge to the motion, discussion, and then we place the bill. Paragrah subsequent to that following that the pledge was amended, although with a transfer of funds from the road funds to the drainage issue is not in that amendment, therefore I don't know what priority put there. But it appears to be an opinion by the village clerk. It creates the initial appearance that trustees are trying to take board money from the roads and put it into the final drainage issues. I think that's a very bad precedent. It creates an added appearance right now, particularly with the roads, the structure they are.
You didn't move any money out of the roads, did you? I think those discussion on a number of different slides that we have required for that.
Well, the issue I had was that this was an unprioritized expense. And in order to do it, I'm all for it, but I'd like to see that we decide not to do something else. And the board agreed with my recommendation that something else we not do was spend so much of this money that we just saved towards more road work. And all I'm really trying to say is, we're going to do something, and then something else should come off the table if it was not budgeted. And the board agreed with that recommendation, and I see that in.
Dave, I wish to question was, when we were asked to move any money from the roads fund that was approved by the board for the road money budget?
That's all.
Into that section, right?
Yes.
Were no movement of funds?
There were no movements of funds. That's true as well.
Let me clarify one point. The discussion of recommendation is a single issue. It states in here, "The general consensus of the board was to go ahead with trustee Kaiser's recommendation." That was not voted upon. There was no motion on that. There was no amendment to the budget. The budget was amended in the preceding paragraph for all their items. So there was no formal motion on that. As far as the consensus goes, that is an opinion of the village clerk.
It was not an opinion of the village clerk.
Was there a vote on the subject?
This was money that we was cash at the end of the year.
There was not a consensus on this. There was not a vote, so how do you know there was consensus on that?
Because there was consensus about it.
How? What documents do you have that indicate there's a consensus?
Yeah, I.
I'm saying to remove this.
What would you like to?
Just remove this sentence, because I think it's a bad illustration of the board. Remove that one sentence. There was no consensus that the board was.
Which sentence?
The last sentence. "The general consensus of the board was to go ahead with the trustee Kaiser's recommendation." Remove that sentence.
We're talking about fiscal responsibility. We're talking about meeting the budget.
Then why wasn't it included in the amendment to the budget? You have amended the budget. The budget was previously passed in the previous paragraph.
Would you like to make a motion to what you're requesting then?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. That sentence, as stated, as well as the general consensus of the board, was to go ahead with the trustee Kaiser's recommendation removed.
Okay. Motion, any second? This is the most.
This is not going to change the budget in any way, though, correct? You're, I mean, you just want this to be hysteria in the minute, correct?
No. The budget is, the documents on the budget are black and white.
Right.
This does not change the budget. There's no change to the budget. The budget has to have the approval of the trustees.
So, Bob, then just another clarification, there's no change to the budget. Since these monies were not in the original budget, then they would have to be offset by something else not spent.
Yes.
I disagree with you, Dave. That's not the case. You keep talking about a contingency fund and wanting to have reserved. The budget that we approved, we all know, did not reflect 100% of the revenue based upon a road pattern. So there is some flex in there. We agreed at the budget time that that was true. The only problem I have with this is to take funds that are being listed as road funds, when that's a sensitive issue in this village, and to use those for grading. If you want to call out and say that you want to use these funds for grading, and that's necessary for the protection of this asset known as the V farm building, then indeed we should call that out and should be listed out on the budget as being V farm construction. It shouldn't be included under road fund. We shouldn't try to hide something from the people. We should let them know that we're going to spend this money on the V farm and not on something else. I have no problem spending the money. I have a problem with the category that you're trying to put in when you say roads. This is not a roads matter. This is a grading issue because it hasn't had final grading on this complex. So.
Bob, there was, there was no change to the roads budget. He's not pulling 30,000 out of the roads budget, which was approved.
But what his discussion was last month led by trustee Kaiser, was that he wanted to use the monies that were saved by the bids coming in under what we had budgeted for the roads. Now, that, it's inappropriate. You want us to use that funds. That's a totally separate matter. So you're giving the impression that you're attempting to take this money that is V farm grading money and stick it in and say, "We did road work." And I'm saying, no. Put it down on non-budgeted line that says V farm. I'm perfectly happy with that.
I'm with you on that. Let's put it on a non-budgeted line called V farm, and then let's not spend $15,000 out of the 30 that we saved so that we melt out the budget.
That's a separate matter. I disagree with you on that point. We budgeted 501,000. The residents of this village expect us to spend 501,000 on board. We originally had, in the first year of the road program, we go back to starting this in the discussion months ago, that we wanted to spend, be wrong with the number, 885, 889. An arbitrary number, I believe, 62% of that number came up, 501,000. There was an attempt to lower it even further, and we ended up at 501. We should spend 501 on roads. We've got to spend money on other things. We've got to spend money on other things.
Dan?
Again, I think fiscal responsibility is important.
This is the time to start fiscal responsibility with grading, when you're spending how much on this already, but that's.
I just have a question on treasurer Stadi. When the bill comes in, you would not be allocating this to the roads budget? Wouldn't you put this under V farm?
Right.
So there's no way it would be confusing to anybody who looked at our budget or our financials that she's not going to put it under the road budget. It's not going to look like it's coming from the roads budget. So I don't think it's going to confuse anyone.
Then we're agreeing. That's a clarification that I wanted to make, because as I recall the conversation, I was very concerned that that grading money was going to be stuck into the road, and that was inappropriate. And that's the only point I had. I understand Bob's point, because if you have something we want to put in, put it in. Doesn't make any difference whether it's budgeted or non-budgeted. We're going to take the money out.
But Terry, according to what you're saying, there would be no, would not be going on the roads?
No. We could have it right now. And you recall, last month, we amended or we did supplemental budget for prior year because some could have expected that of roads and horses. So we end up with 10,000 around then, or maybe not, so.
Okay. Terry, so does that need clarification on that issue?
I was comfortable with it all along, but my concern was, the conversation that occurred last month, as I thought about it, it bothered me that they were saying, because of the savings, we'll just use that money. And the implication, whether it was stated or not, or intended, the implication was we're going to use road funds for grading. And that, I just want to see you put in the right classification.
Do you know, treasurer Stadi, where we put in the property area? Yes, Howard.
What bothers me, the people are finding implications that are not in the final budget, which put 501,000 per roads. So it seems to me, if we voted 501,000 per roads later in that meeting, that the whole meeting speaks for itself. And this is.
All right, so.
There's a vote.
I'm not hearing any further discussion. Let's move the voiceover. And this is, can you describe the last sentence? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Hold on, please.
You want to hold on? Or?
Hold on, please.
Trustee Cracker?
Yes.
Trustee Cracker? No. Trustee Cracker?
No.
Trustee Cracker?
Yes.
Trustee Cracker? Yes.
No. Good for votes, man. Motion failed, ma'am. Yes, we still need to, we have a motion and a second. Just for me, hold on. All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Moving into the public comment area. Public comment portion of the village board meeting is a limited public forum. Any persons may address the village board and the mayor's pertaining to village business, which is not scheduled to be discussed under another agenda item. Disrespectful insulting, satirical, or offensive comments directed at any individual public official are not permitted. Village president can cut off public comments deemed to be inappropriate. All public comments or questions shall be directed to the village president, who may refer the matter to another official for response. First up is Pat Kelly.
Yes. Is that you? Hi.
This is in regards to the Old Farm Road.
That's correct.
Yeah, there's a five-minute one, just in case everyone didn't hear.
Aye.
Go ahead.
As you know, my name is Pat Kelly, and I live on Old Farm Road. I also live on Green Forest Lake, and I'm, my property is kitty corner and right across from the park that's on Old Farm Road. First of all, we found out that some play equipment was going to be funded in that, and I just want to state that, and I'm going to start there by saying that none of the people who are against the village putting in the recreational equipment, which we are, into that small plot of land on Old Farm Road are against children. Deer Park, particularly where we are, is blessed with large acreage. We all have one to two acres, almost about acre and a half. And I have no problem, nobody I've met has any problem with anybody doing whatever they want in terms of swing sets on their own yards. And in our community, they certainly have, it's an affluent community, it's the most affluent community I've ever lived in. And I was resident next to Go-Bet for many years. This place beats it. We've got swimming pools, one person has a tennis court out there, the kids have motorized cars, motorized scooters, motorized everything. They play golf on their front lawn, baseball, tennis, they've got trampoline sets. If you can imagine it, including swings, slides, and jungle gyms, it's there, and they're in the works. Now, I don't believe this is the kind of community that needs this equipment, and I'm concerned about, and so are the lake owners that I spoke to, and so are the four homes that are adjacent to this park, worried about the risks that it poses. Now, I've sent to the trustees 10 points after talking to four families, that right off the bat, we're worried about, and we thought a lot about putting in the play equipment there, the village proposing, that it had been funded. And you have those things, you also have some other submissions that I've sent you with regard to problems that I had with the way the petition was given to apparently the last fall, and the misleading nature of it. Now, we all thought that the idea of a park was space for everybody, open space for everybody of all ages to go to. That's currently how it's used. Right now, there are adults who walk in there to add a little bit extra time to their jog. Admittedly, sometimes people go in there with their dogs, probably to avoid running across other dogs as they cross paths. It's very useful, as all the circles are, all the way around that circle around the lake. Also, people go in there right now, I see little children playing frisbees, sometimes little baseball games, assuming it's not, you know, hitting the baseball. And sometimes there are girls in there with their makeshift tents and umbrellas. All kinds of stuff goes on there right now. Right now, it's kind of like a mini Chicago Botanic Gardens. It's very pretty, very aesthetic, in my opinion, raises up the value of our neighborhood. There's 12 parks over to this one in Deer Park, and I went around them all last week. And now, I was typing this thing till one in the morning last night, so afraid I didn't have it in advance, but when I'm done, I'm going to be passing around my little survey of the 12 parks. And basically what it does, it analyzes what they have and what they don't have, and what none of them have is what we have, which is a dangerous condition. I also have a page on the con case talking about the restatement of the laws of nuisance, because I'm very concerned that the village is leaving itself open if it goes ahead and uses recreational equipment there. Recreational equipment is going to say, kids, kids only. Kids go to that park, it's one thing if they're there with their moms and daddies, no problem with it, fine. But what happens in the tort liability cases that I've seen, like a Cracker's law? Jay's lady talked about the six-year-old. Now, he was, or she was real big when they were five, when they were potty daddy, but when they walked over there with their six, when they're six, they're just as curious. And that's when some of these cases come up. And I'm afraid that by tracking them there, by having a beacon that says, "Come here, whether you're a six-year-old, our neighbor, or possibly someone else from Dr. Cracker." There's a serious, there's a drain just over the corners of the, that block, there's always running water, and it's full of salt. I know it's full of salt, and I see it all the time.
One minute.
Oh, okay.
I guess one.
I'll write it right. Yeah, and then, of course, there's the lake itself. I've been in that lake several times, do things, and you never leave. Every other time I go there, the mud grabs a hold of my boots, and I have to pull my foot out of my shoe, and then I pay my dues off. It's a dangerous condition. I've warned the park, or warned the village about considering and reconsidering again liability for this in there, and that's all I wanted to say again, I wanted to, he says, "For the data," I only mean seven copies, but it's my survey to will the other parks, what they have is broken up. And then, again, at least there's a con case from U S P for talking about the laws of traffic business. I'm very concerned about this. Just ask the village to relook at it. Thank you.
Can you, if I could just recap, your concern is liability, and liability on your park since you're across the street from where proposed park is, and your, if kids walk across the park and go onto your property, and something were happening?
Yes.
I believe that's.
And I believe all four of us, because I always have.
Okay.
Again, the lake owners itself, it's really a petition, only 12% of people who are actually on the lake sign this thing. That means that there's 88% who didn't. So if you think this is the majority of people wanting it, think twice, think twice about it. And I'm also concerned, what I say, the village should move by putting this traffic nuisance in there, being basically in control of this on their park. In my opinion, it's possible to do it, creating this liability yourself. Hey, Bob, if you've got a lawyer here, this isn't my field of law, but I went in there for a while alone with my partner, just to address you. Thank you.
Trustee Cracker, these are our part of solution. If you have any comments, you guys, welcome.
I really don't have any comments to it, other than the fact that when we talked about where we replaced it, some of the things that you raised regarding safety of the children were discussed good. And it was placed, the equipment was assigned, for a second, doesn't mean it's a replacement that can finally improve, furthest away from water pieces. On the other, not too deep, as you look at the park, to the left side of the park, away from water. Concerns are noted. I would say to you that we have exactly the same situation in at least one, two, three, three of the parks that you know.
I disagree, and that's why I mean.
Well, you do disagree, and I choose to disagree as well. But there are three parks, and I noticed when you mentioned, you don't acknowledge that, that the residents who are on Charlie Brown Park, and if he, they do talk to me about the fair.
At least in Charlie Brown Park, part of that lake is village owned. I don't think, I don't think it's village owned. There's both must be a lot of liability, there's a big difference there in the trustee. And I'm asking all six of you to vote with intentions.
And we'll go, we have our votes turned, looking to have also.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dennis Check? Kind of loud, Dennis. Close it all, no Dennis before we trust.
I left because the table's so good. Good evening. My name is Dennis Check. I've been a resident of Deer Park for 27 years, and it's a wonderful place to live. There's two items I'd like to address for the trustees. The first one is a request to take, to amend the agreement group, who's the provider of service for garbage pickup. This past December, my wife and I retired, and we were fortunate enough to spend the winter in Florida. Prior to leaving, we contacted some of our providers of different services, such as Direct TV, Comcast, were able to suspend the service without a charge. And the same thing over at the U O Y M C A, we're able to eliminate the charge from those time through Florida. And contacting group, they do not allow, there's no suspension of service, you still have to continue to pay for service that you're not using, basically. I'd like to see if it'd be possible if the village and this, or the good contractor, and see if the present contractor, the event, and I did talk with him about it, and he indicated that there was no provision at present time. Considering the fact that the agreement is going to be in place until 2010, again, it's all possible, it would be great to see if there was some type of financial, it could be provided to residents who do, you know, during the winter. The village administration also, they've had about 10 residents contact him about this. So, again, if it's feasible, it'd be great. I know no one likes to open up the agreement when you're halfway through, or if they're devoting, it'd certainly be a creepish. The second I'd like to talk about is the Fourth of July fireworks. I've noted, as years have gone by, particularly the last four or five years, the, I call the noise, the safety issues, the sophistication of fireworks that some of our neighbors are abusing, is just kind of not, I think, beyond control. In fact, it reminds me a lot of back in Vietnam. And so I think it's a real safety issue. I don't think the police are enforcing laws regarding the use of fireworks. I don't know what specifically it is, but I'd like to see the village, first of all, put something in the quarterly newsletter, explain what can be used and what cannot be used, and that the village is going to enforce it. I looked at it from a safety problem of two points. The first one is, last year, the wind was blowing towards my house. I have a neighbor who, again, it's just amazing the amount of fireworks that they put out on the Fourth of July. The projectiles are landing on my lawn, they're coming very close to the house. Now, there's a storm, and I'd say it happened, there might be a possibility that the roof plane, it's coming on fire, and the house would, you know, cause a fire. But more importantly, each year, when you turn on the television, on the Fourth of July, the next day, or pick up a newspaper, you always meet about some money being, by using illegal fireworks. So what I'm asking is the village to talk with the police and to enforce the law. And if, you know, I don't think that I, as a resident, should have to call the police, have them, you know, go to the neighbor who was ever using these fireworks illegally. So if at all possible, two things. Put something in the quarterly newsletter and indicate just exactly what the law is, and I'm asking the police to enforce the law when they're patrolling the area. That's the only two things I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Lily, we have a comment, so I'd like to discuss those between us, where are the comments? Chief, please. Chief, Willie, your.
No, I agree. Fireworks are a very large health hazard in the area, and I'll say too, that our officers will continue to enforce it. We have been enforcing them as we see them, because we're on one side of the village, and they go off on another side, and we don't care. You know, we try to make do with it, but as we do find the fireworks, we are enforcing them, and I will instruct our supervisors to make sure that they continue. But we are aware of the fact that there's a safety hazard, and we agree, there's no place for fireworks in Deer Park and residential areas.
Joe Thompson?
Regarding the streets. Hello? I would like to address the conditions of the streets. I live a resident of Deer Lake Meadows, and I did bring pictures, and I have to say that the streets are really deplorable, and I would like to see them, as we've talked about. It isn't just a matter of cracks or cosmetics, but the fabric in several of the places is worn down to that, there's holes, there's gravel everywhere. And, you know, I look back in the records of, or I asked about the records, and our subdivision was scheduled to be repaid in 2003. I personally called in 2005, and was told they were going to be replaced in 2008. And I called this year, and now it's in some future year. So I think that it is not really creating a very good perception, aside from the fact that it's going to cost you more to fix them later. The perception of the board is really more of one being reactive, and the word that you would say in one year really doesn't matter, because when it comes to time to execute the work, the date's just moved up a year, or two years, or three years. And at this point, I don't really know when they're scheduled, and from the tone of the conversation earlier, it sounds like there really isn't a whole lot of agreement there. So I would just ask that you try to find a way, if you stay to date, that you find a way to plan for the money to be there, and, or don't stay to date. But the real request is, is to fix the roads, and it's not something, again, it's cosmetic, it's just something I think that it really should be looked at. So that's what I'm asking for.
Thank you.
And if there's extra money in the budget, it sounds like there was savings there. It sounds like we should spend the money where it was, at least where it's budgeted, and not spend someplace else. Thank you.
Just so you know, there. Just so you know, there was unanimous agreement on the roads. During the trust, you voted to approve. We've all not. We've tried to put a little extra patching in there also, some reserve. One is the patching is set to start. This year's been a horrible year in terms of, you know, the winter and the cold that's taken out the roads, and snatches near a park and started community around. We're getting ready to start our roads program fairly soon now. When is the patching?
Seven to 10 days. They might, could have started some of their, they started the preliminary work today, I guess. You can tell you that they're putting up, they're getting the position to put the equipment in to start up some of the patching work. Your area would be 97.
sounds like we should spend the money where it was, at least for its budget, to, and not spend someplace else. So, thank you.
Just so you know, there was unanimous agreement on our roads. During the trust, you voted to approve. We even tried to put a little extra patching in there also. Some of the reserve had to add. One is the patching is set to start. This year's been a horrible year in terms of, you know, the winter and the cold has taken out the roads. It's not just Deer Park, it's started community around. We're getting ready to start our roads program fairly soon now. How long is the patching?
Seven to ten days. They might, could have started some of their, they started the preliminary work today, I guess. You can tell you that they're putting up, they're getting the position to put the equipment in to start up some of the patching work. Your area would be ninety-seven. Your, that ninety percent of your area would be patched.
Patched?
Right. Now, this is, this is, this is not with a shovel, with a truck. This is construction crews with, with, with the grinders, knives, going through back holes and moving it, and doing a complete patch. And then, I hope also for the board tonight, which would increase that area.
Okay. If there is savings in the, in the proposals, can that money be spent to look at additional roads?
That's what we're, that's what we're intending to do.
Okay. You know, even the last year, they came through and they did the cutting to do patching, but they never finished. And when I called to say, well, what happened? The answer was, we ran out of money. So, something's not right. So, anyway, whatever you can do, we appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Trevor Hart? I believe same item, streets and tunnels.
Good evening. My name is Trevor Hart. I'm a resident of Deer Park, of Deer Lake Meadows, and for about five years. I'm also the Deer Lake Meadows Homeowners Association President, and I come here tonight as a voice concern for our homeowners about our streets. I've heard from and listened to many homeowners on the subject. And I think primarily, they fall into one of three categories. One, long-term owners who have continually heard about the resurfacing and about the proposed improvements that have continued to put off. So, they're frustrated. Our long-term owners are frustrated. The intermediate-term homeowner who probably bought their house six, four, five years ago, and have seen breaks in the real estate market, is also frustrated. He has a concern about their roads and I think, again, that's a point of contention to hold on to, to be frustrated with. The third category would be sellers and buyers who don't want any bad roads. I heard from a gentleman who has a home for sale, that's mentioned just that, you know, he feels shattered in an open house, it's about our roads, about our community, isn't positive. I mentioned I live in Deer Lake Meadows and I've always felt like our neighborhood has a real sense of pride. Two years ago, as a board, we undertook updating, amending our bylaws and covenants to a stricter point. And it's very difficult as a board to go to homeowners and tell them things that, in majority, have been agreed upon to elevate their property, or more everybody's investments. Very tough conversation to have. And I know that you all have tough conversations with us as homeowners. So, I'm here just to, to ask that you continue to plan, to give us consideration, let us know where things stand. If there is savings, put it towards the things that matter to all of us and that's the basis of the roads. It have been for quite some time. Meadow language, the street that I live on has a considerable amount of traffic and it's really only, it's hard, it was very landlocked, so there's one exit and entrance primarily. It's a lot of traffic and the photographs that Joel, you know, Dave, you are, are very, very telling of how bad it was. The last thing I'll, I'll just end with is a personal story. I had a friend, his wife from the city, come out over the weekend and as they pulled out, they hit a pothole kind of right in front of our house. And they mentioned that that was a Chicago-style pothole right there and we usually don't see that too much in the suburbs and I think it's truly gotten to that level. So, thanks for your consideration, thanks for your time, use of your service. Please give us consideration on things that matter most, which are the basics and things.
No way it will be addressed. That's one of my priorities. Okay. I want to, I can see you're the way to here, I mean, I'll show you the server.
Thank you for your time. Governor Merrick?
Good evening, everyone, and way to have a public meeting. This is fabulous. This is hardly what I want to speak about tonight. I'm Deborah Berry, 401-2 Bramble Lane, and Deer Park, and a secretary for Deer Park One of the things, theme we keep hearing is, where are we going to get more people, more money into this town? And that comes from people who come here. And I'm asking a question tonight of this board that many, many residents have asked me. Is this board truly serious about marketing this community center? Tonight, we see what it can be like when the parking lots full and tailgate parties and it's just fabulous. I don't see anything on the agenda, I might have missed it, for actually spending the $5,000 on Pittance that was voted into the budget, but we need to actually spend that money. So, I want to know, when will that money come before this board to be spent? And for those who have potholes and other problems, it's very important that we move this barn forward. I've been volunteering my time, as has Trustee Pratcher, to complete the marketing brochure, but we were asked for 250 copies. Now, let's assume we have a great turnout to those 250 copies. What, 25 people might be interested in two or three of them? That is not going to get the $70,000 we need if we count the new staff person. $70,000 just for this building to be here. So, I volunteered my services through 2008 and I'm continuing to do, I will continue to do so. I've started, I've started to design a unique logo. We need something better than a piece of clip art and we have to go out there to reach thousands and thousands of potential renters. Now, you heard a suggestion several months ago, that Concord Banquets might be an excellent corporate carpet for us. They're looking for an outdoor venue. Instead of building a 105-foot building, they could be doing a lot of their smaller weddings and meetings and birthday parties right here. As a matter of fact, we met the owner at Killdeer meeting last, last Monday and spoke with him after the meeting and they are seriously interested. So, I'd like to know, President Gifford, who will follow up with John Calibares, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, Concord Banquets? They'd like to see this place and they are very interested in seeing what possibilities are here. I've got all the room in the world to put up and take down tents.
Have you met Bond?
Yes, I have met Bond. She person?
Bond is the events board here.
Great, I was, I-
I thought you met her.
Well, I, I'm really looking for a little bit more guidance from this board to really move this project forward. Bond's terrific. I'm having a meeting with her on Wednesday. I just didn't want to step on any toes and I would love to set up a three-way meeting. In the meantime, here's another idea. We've had to cut back on our charitable donations. How about when somebody comes to us for a donation, which we can't make, say, hey, how about instead of a donation, you hold one of your meetings here or one of your public events here? That would be great exposure for this barn and the facilities that we have. It's already here and again, it's $70,000 a year just sitting here. And that would be a way, instead of saying no to an organization, we can say yes, but we're going to give our donation in the form of time here. We've heard at the previous meeting, a previous meeting about $25,000 in additional lighting. We desperately need that. We all know how dark and dangerous this parking lot can be. I think this board should ask your foundation, the Bay Foundation, to make that expense. That would be a great opportunity for corporate underwriting. More lighting and especially, lighting at the, at the street, so that people could actually see the Bay Foundation, the Bay property, when they're coming here. And while they're at it, they should put the circle driveway back again. The safety arguments for its removal were simply foundless and a circular driveway is no less authentic than our flush toilets and freight elevators. So, let's get the circle drive back and make this a very appealing place. I have one other subject to ask this board to put on the June agenda and I think tonight's a great night to talk about putting it on the agenda. We're very aware, Deer Park Neighbors, that the greatest interest in this community, some of the greatest interest is coming from our young families. You see that here tonight. And how, is this terrific, having the kids out there doing their homework and waiting to hear their parents speak? Yet, young parents are at least able to attend a seven o'clock meeting, although you can see that they certainly try. New business is provided for in our municipal code and it's listed at the end of the agenda. Let's actually follow that code, put back new business, as does Killdeer, at the end of the meeting and open it up to public comments. That would show that this board is genuinely interested to hear what your residents have to say. And this way, young parents could feed, bathe and tuck in their kids. One parent could babysit while the other comes here to the barn to participate in village business. And I'd like to see that on the, on the agenda for next month. Thank you.
Just so you know, we originally have public comments, new business at the end of the meeting, there are numerous complaints, meetings, it's been all around, it's somewhat locked. So, so we moved them up to the front. We've heard complaints that some of the-
There's no reason we can't solve them.
Always sales. Thank you. How is it remaining or not?
I would just like to comment, we have this park over Green Forest, it's not being utilized. Time to get the kids off the streets, into the park. When I moved to Deer Park, that was before Bob Kellerman. My kids were playing in Rainbow Road. And now they got a nice park over there, it's time to get the kids away from the TV and their computers and let them use that park. Thank you.
How you doing again? My name's Kurt Aldrich, I'm owner of Money Boss County and Deer Park. We bought this property in 1990, conforming commercial property, based on your planned development ordinance, which entails one to five acres, you could build a commercial In 2003, both villages, Deer Park and Killdeer, went ahead with this boundary agreement, unbeknownst to us, but, which basically traded properties. So, now, apparently, I'm in, I don't know, Killdeer. By doing this, it, it, you know, Killdeer has a higher raised threshold of property size. Their, their ordinance is two to five acres, so I don't even, I don't even, I was placed in somewhere where I don't even fit. And this was done by both the villages of Deer Park and Killdeer in an agreement, a boundary agreement. I did nothing wrong here, but unfortunately, the only person that's suffering the consequences is me. Both you and Killdeer will probably benefit from this, but I may not. And this was done by no actions by me, but, you know, slowly actions by Killdeer and Deer Park. So, it basically turned my conforming commercial land into non-commercial land. So, the way I have my property listed for sale right now, it says, non-conforming commercial land, 2.06 in Killdeer, 475 feet of frontage, which is roughly a city block of frontage, which is roughly about half the size of your mall at Killdeer frontage, and basically turning it to non-conforming commercial property. Based on your, I mean, what in your, your planned development ordinance, these are guidelines that people should follow when they, when they want to buy or develop this area. And it's specifically said, you know, it's just right here, free standing, we're looking one to five acres. I mean, that's what I bought. That's what my grand, I inherited this money, bought this property for that. And so, what I'm asking for is, you know, if I do something wrong and whatnot, I'm always held accountable for my actions, just like everybody else. I make mistakes, everybody makes mistakes, but you're held accountable for it and you're, you know, there, there's ramifications to that. You know, what I'm asking for is, both you and Killdeer made a mistake and there's, there's lots of areas of mistakes that I know of, which you don't know of. And, you know, and I'd like to handle this out without legal investigations, because I don't want to get into the lying game. You know, I don't, I don't want to hear, because once you get legal matters, it's, it's all based on lies. There's no truth to it. And that's true, Mr. Attorney. I spent a lot of time in court, so. So, basically, what I'm asking for is compensation for your mistake and Killdeer's mistake. And that's all I can say about this. It's probably the last kind of thing I can say.
Senator Trump?
Oh, and the other, and I, I spoke to Mr. Gifford on the phone and, you know, he said, you know, best of luck to you. I mean, we had a conversation, but it seemed as if, as if you were washing your hands with this. And, you know, I'm, I'm still suffering the consequences of both your villages' decisions based on this boundary agreement. And that, this is just one issue. I mean, there's, there's other issues involving this, but tonight, I'm just, I'm just talking about the agreement. Anyway.
As you know, when we had our conversation, I talked with Laura Schreiber, Village Manager of Killdeer, to see what we can do with the villages.
What did she have to do? Laura Schreiber or something?
To see what we can do with the villages.
She, she doesn't.
Okay.
I would talk to the village.
Thank you, thank you very much. That's a good one. I'd like to hear. Well, it's part of the boundary agreement that, you know, they have jurisdiction over the zone now. That's what, that's what we have to say so. I ask who's working to support something now. There are other discussions. That's all we're talking about.
My reason for asking for those of us who tend to agree is we, we discussed that we wanted to approach and the President Gifford approach, Village Killdeer, to see if they would do some sort of extenuating circumstances to aid this situation. I don't know what else to ask right now, unless Attorney Keller has some thought that he doesn't have to share now. I appreciate if he has some thought that he might talk with President Gifford about to give some aid. I don't want to do a complex, I want to give aid, help to his situation. I mean, I just feel like my hands are tied, I can't help it. I have difficulty with this situation and I, I wish our village could do more for you, because I understand that I have, like the attorney thing about it, but I can't.
The other, the other, I'd like to say is that we were, the school was under disconnection, nor, nor resigned. But both villages had continued on, followed the path as it, as we have. I'm not a lawyer, but don't you have to accomplish something before you start doing something?
I don't understand. We weren't disconnected.
What?
Don't work in the spirit of candor, I'll start to talk.
President Gifford, I have one more question that I think maybe Attorney Keller needs to know. And I did, Kurt, I'd just like you to answer, how much land did you sell of your original land that you sold so that shopping center next door, you-
We had, we had 2.66, now it's 2.06, so 2.60, so the handle, pardon.
Mike Timman? Is that correct?
My topic has to do with, it's actually a drainage complaint. The communications I see coming out of the village refer to roads and drainage. So, I assume that means you're responsible for both of those things. And by drainage, I think we're talking about swales. Turn might be accustomed to. Anyways, we have, I'm on Wareheim Road. There's only eight houses, four on each side. The end of the road is a cul-de-sac. It's a hill, a going downhill. The drainage is supposed to go down to Circle Drive. This road was right on. I've been there since 1970 and the swales were there in the same fashion when I arrived, but they have been altered by the neighbor who moved in a few years ago. I was across the street from a Andressen, who was there when I arrived, and several people have bought and sold that hole since he moved on. And nobody felt it necessary to alter the drainage. So, I was at the meeting here, the January, and when I heard the engineer, Ann Kupenberg say, we seem to agree on that, on the matter, that the village does have rights and responsibilities regarding maintenance of the swales in conjunction with the road as it relates to rain and snow removal. So, I'd like somebody to tell me if we're in agreement with that or there's some disagreement. But I think it's the village's responsibility to see that the water keeps going down that hill. There's really two other parts to this. So, I'd like somebody to expand on that and clarify, just what you should be expecting from the village regarding swales. I did file a complaint on 3/31 with Bob Kellerman. I did file a complaint on 3/31 with Bob Kellerman, because he had asked for complaints if he had any or any drainage and road problem information. So I did submit that on 3/31 after having heard in January that it's your responsibility. My complaint had to do with what has taken place across the street, and it all has to do with the swales. So, as I explained to Bob in that letter, over the period of the last two or three years, the neighbor turned the swale into his own personal garden. That was the first banner. He put in trees and bushes. The next thing he did was diverted the water that was coming down the street from Lake Of Road to the end of the street. He diverted it across the street, that's into my driveway. He did that by scraping the top surface of the road. He had a contractor actually do it, stand in the window watching it. So the water that always went down to Circle Drive is now coming to 17 Wareham Road, and it's filled up about a quarter of my driveway on a consistent basis, and sits there, muddling. The next step was to dump rock and enter and run it across the road. So to get to his property now, there's only half a road there, where the baby will be in my backyard pretty soon, but right now, he's only taken half. The problem I see with that is that it would make it very difficult, or worse, if there was a need for an emergency vehicle, such as a fire truck. Because they wouldn't be able to get in between the houses, and it might have to do with taking somebody out. So I think there's more than just the village and the swales. I think there may be a safety concern there.
Five minutes left, just ready.
Okay, to summarize, the water's in my driveway. Okay, so nice place for mosquitoes to grow, in Harvard. I think that the village, oh, the same party has apparently put in a request for a drain. He's going to put a drain in the street, he's going to put it right in front of my driveway, as I understand. I have not seen the official, he's commented that Deer Park is very slow on providing approval for a drain. So if it's your responsibility to see that the water moves.
What we'll do is, I hear your word, situation.
He has a unique situation, because I was out there, Jim Conners has been out there, and Todd Van Mac have been out there. The problem is, is you have a property line immediately behind you, Circle. There's some old drainage tile there. When I was out there, not only did the water go down the road, but also goes behind his house, or property, which way is that? North, it'd be down. This is lower.
Circle Drive is going.
The drain is off or something, the street. It's private terrain, private property, and Jim Conner's not talking about this. And we have, Jim, it's something we talked about, which we brought up last meeting.
Let me just clarify, it's two matters. He's right, that problem's been there, and he's got a letter going back 26 years. 26 years ago, the village said, "This drainage tile must be kept open." That's in writing, I gave him a copy of that.
That's right.
It's supposed to been cleaned up, and it's just sitting there, and the tiles are decaying, and people are...
You couldn't send your...
But this other banner...
I'll work on it, I'll work on it.
If a guy takes over the swales, is the village not responsible to correct that? There's no expense, you don't need road money, you say to him, move it, get out of there. Okay, I'd love to hear what's happening.
I've already gotten the gentleman.
Last thing, on top of that, where he scraped the road, the water washed it away, and Deer Park went out there and patched that. They were out there last year, a truck and five guys for day and half. Now, that's a bill that he should have paid. The village should not have paid that bill.
Rita Finley?
Yeah. Hello, my name is Rita Finley from Forest Green Lake Estates. I'm here to talk about the Old Farm Park. I want to thank you very much for approving the budget that would include the park equipment and benches on Old Farm Road last month. My neighbors, my family and I are very happy about this finally happening. Many have waited over 20 years for this. As you know, the residents of Forest Green Lake Estates are not within walking distance of any village park and have to cross the Akron rail intersection on Cuba Road, which borders our neighborhood, to drive to the village park, to drive to any other village park. I want to mention that one resident I spoke with yesterday expressed or asked that a private property and no swimming sign be placed across the street from the park in case kids somehow thought that across the street was an extension of the park. And I want to say, I think they might be prudent to consider this to be done in a tasteful way, and also to have the Killdeer Police Department aware of this as they regularly patrol the neighborhood. I do think there's a pent-up demand that exists for a park here, so use will be strong initially, but then it will level off, similar to usage at Chapel Hill or Dover Pond, probably less than those subdivisions, as they have tennis courts. Another resident told my neighbor that she heard that the playground equipment was taking money away from roads. Yet I believe this represents roughly 0.7% of the total village budget, and it will not be repeated annually other than minor maintenance. I don't know if somebody was trying to scare her, I don't know, but what I do know is that over 50 residents signed the petition supporting the use of village park funds to add bench and play equipment to the Old Farm Park. And secondly, that this is village property. Supporters represent various demographics of the community. Many are sitting here. There's families, there's empty nesters, there's single homeowners that don't have any children. They include people with homes on the lake and those without. We didn't have time to get everyone, as I was told, and I was told by more that they would have signed. Why? Because the park has many benefits. It benefits neighbors with children, neighbors with grandchildren, and many neighbors that like to just walk around the neighborhood, regardless of if they have kids or not. They want to take a break and maybe do the lake, because that's what the benches would be for. What, we are happy that you're listening to the voters' request. As stated last month, we would like the play equipment to be neutral with unobtrusive colors, to coincide with the serenity of the neighborhood. This is good for the neighbors adjacent to the park as well. Again, I thank the five trustees that voted yes, and President Gifford for his support. I'm not sure what trustee plus was thinking, but it is clear that this park is in the best interest of the community, and the overwhelming majority of the residents of this neighborhood want an approved park here. Please approve the equipment purchase tonight. This will promote community and physical activity while maintaining the serenity of our neighborhood, and build on our assets, especially since we have no park in safe walking distance, and this public land was designated to be a park by the developer. This park will bring a better sense of community to the area, and we believe community starts at the neighborhood level. Thank you again for listening and for making this happen.
This is Tom Powell, he's going to assist me. Jill Stewenwell, I live at 24347 Tannager Court, and I want to thank you also, I'm not going to repeat everything that Rita said, but that's also what I wanted to say. She stole my thunder. Right. Anyway, thank you to President Gifford for your support last month, and five trustees who voted for the park and the equipment, or, excuse me, for support of the park. While we obviously can't make everyone happy, in this case, you've listened to the majority of the residents in our neighborhood. We did not ask everyone to sign our petition of request for the equipment, that is true, but I don't believe that's what a petition is for, to hit everybody in the neighborhood. We had a limited amount of time, we went around, we knocked on doors of people we knew who were approachable and we probably thought were supportive, and some people weren't home when we did go, we have some of those people here tonight as well. So when Rita says that we could have had more signatures, we could have, and some of those people are here tonight. And we have that support, and they're all wearing smiley face stickers, and I'd like them all to stand up, if you would. And the kids are all coming in too. Our community, we like to get together, you know, we want to get together. We haven't had a community party for a while, we haven't done a lot of those things, but I think this park will bring everybody together even more. I'm sorry for those private property owners that have a pond across from the park, but that is private property. My insurance agent would be happy to give them a call, they don't think that their liability insurance is enough to cover, you know, their umbrella policy, to cover the attractive nuisance. The pond was there when they built their home, they knew that risk. If the park had been equipped 20 years ago, as it should have been, when Deer Park didn't have any money at all, probably 2,000 people, I don't know, would they have still bought their house with the park equipment there and the park there? I probably think they probably would have. I don't know, we'll have to ask them. If they have other, you know, they can always put more signs up, whether the village chooses to do that, or they do, there are plenty of signs there now, I'm sure there's room for more, but if you drive by, you'll see the signs. And I can't believe that this small park is going to attract a lot of other children who do not already live in our neighborhood. There was some concern years back that we were going to attract old orchard kids to our park. You know, they have their own two and a half acre park, and they'll go there, if the tweens want somewhere to hang out, maybe they'll stop by our house, or our park, but there's a few barking dogs around that park, and I doubt they'll be able to stay long. And people can always call the police if they feel somebody's trespassing. Right? Okay, thank you. This park was supposed to be installed 20 years ago, and now you're fulfilling that promise, that the developer put that, the land aside, and thank you. Tom Powell, I have a few things to add, thank you.
Good evening, thank you. I just have a few short comments and much to make. I've been a resident of Green Forest Lake Estates since 1986, which makes me probably one of the longtime, old timers of the neighborhood. The property itself consisted, Green Forest Lake Estates, of 40 home sites and one parcel that was designated by the gentleman that owned it, Michael Tan, as being a park. And it's great to see that you've shown some interest into the needs, of course, of the residents of this area by developing into a true park, which it should have been many, many years ago. We do not have any real tennis courts in Green Forest Lake Estates, I don't know if any public or private. Two homes in the subdivision do have pools, they are private, and of course, two, none of these homes that have the pools have anyone living in the residence under the age of Park property was left, of course, by Michael Tan, and he had a great interest of the community and the neighborhood involved. He wanted to make sure he was giving a part of what he owned back to the community. No park, like was mentioned before, is within a near distance of the area. Once again, two, it is a risk factor of having children cross railroad tracks. I don't think at the time, 15, 20 years ago, I had my children cross on those tracks by themselves, but it would be nice to have something in the area and something where everyone in the neighborhood can, of course, benefit from. What the park is going to provide, once again, two, is a necessity, and is necessary for safe environment for the families of Green Forest Lake Estates to enjoy and be proud of in the very near future. I want to thank President Gifford, and of course, the trustees that voted the opportunity for us to move forward with our park. Thanks.
I need your sign up, so that I can...
Just so everyone knows, I know there's different opinions on this, no matter how the board votes on this, we are going to take in consideration, work with our attorney to make sure that all parties are covered in terms of safety, liability, and the like. I understand both sides of the story, and I can understand homeowners having some real concerns in regards to liability, and I believe we'll be able to work this out and make sure all parties are covered and parties are handled on our side. Thank you, Tom. Next up is Eric Stewenwell. This is on the park also?
Correct.
Okay.
You're not going to repeat everything? If you sign up and follow my wife, that's not a good idea. I don't want to be the worst on this, but counsel is able to articulate risks of this, risks of that, and it reminded me of a meeting I was in probably about 15 years ago, as the president of a manufacturing company. And all these attorneys, myself included, were telling him why he shouldn't do this. The risk, you have to do this, if you're going to make this new product, you have to do this, you have to do this, you have to protect yourself. He turned to me after a little while, and he said, "If I listen to all you two new bloom attorneys, I'd never make a product, let alone sell." And that's what, the same thing applies here. There are risks in everything, but the risks can be dealt with, you all know that better than any of us, because you know municipal law, you know about court immunity, you know how insurance protects people. Risks can be dealt with, and they should be dealt with, and we shouldn't use fear of potential risks out there to stop us from doing something that's really good. And there can't be any doubt that a park in this community is something that's good. It's good for the kids, they're outside rather than playing video games, they're riding their bikes, it's good for the parents, they're getting to know people in the neighborhood. It's one of the best things you could possibly do for this neighborhood, and don't let, please don't let fear or potential risks out there stop you from doing the right thing, because it's clear that the majority, the great majority of the people in that neighborhood really want this park to take some good ideas. Thanks.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Al Berry, I'm president of Deer Park Neighbors, 1214 Ramble. As you all know, Deer Park Neighbors has adopted Long Grove Road, and we do routine trash pickup between Ramble and Deer Bath Road. This past weekend, we had a great turnout by Deer Park Neighbors, and I want to thank everyone for a great time and a job cleaning up Long Grove Road. We're all very lucky to live in this town. This evening, I'm coming to this board because we do not have an ethics officer, and Deer Park Neighbors has a problem. Deer Park Neighbors is a corporation in Illinois and has received several phone calls from our web advertisers, telling us that they have received phone calls and that it's trying to discourage them from doing business with us. No names were ever given to our customers, but in this age of technology, caller ID, online photos, other forms of technology, one person has been identified. This is a little more than a dirty trick, this is a clear case of tortious interference. And for those non-legal types on the board, tortious interference is someone who comes between a legal business and its customers. The fact that these attacks have been made anonymously shows a lack of personal integrity, but this is not the board's problem. Why am I bringing this to the board? First, I've already written a letter to the president of A Foundation, but in three months have not had it applied. I will now read the letter for the record. The letter was sent to Pat Winkelman on February 11, 2008. Dear Pat, it has come to our attention a number of times over the past few months that someone, female, has been calling or visiting business sponsors of Deer Park Neighbors asking inappropriate questions about the cost of sponsorship, which is clearly posted on our site, and suggesting that these sponsors should prefer not to do business with our company. Most recently, one sponsor identified a A Foundation number by a name from a photograph on the web, that woman claimed to be a customer of this business, although the manager has never seen her before or since, and proceeded along those lines, this time faces face, with clear implication to the manager that doing business with Deer Park Neighbors will cost a sponsored business. although the manager has never seen her before or since, and proceeded along those lines, this time faces face, with clear implication to the manager that doing business with Deer Park Neighbors would cost a sponsored business. On the contrary, DP, Deer Park Neighbors' website is driving business into this location. As president of this corporation, I state in my letter, it is my duty to protect this enterprise. I am taking this position that the above interferences arose out of an excess of enthusiasm or misunderstanding of the rights of a business duly incorporated in the state of Illinois. I am sure that you want to turn the energy of your members to more useful ends. I'm sure that this letter will be all that is needed to prevent any further interference from occurring again. And as always, if you have questions, please call or email me. Never hesitate. Since then, since April, back in February, the latest attempt and intimidation went to, I start laughing every time I tell this, Advocate Good Shepherd Communications Department received a complaint. Who do you think is behind this? If you believe, as I do, that people behind this ridiculous and impotent efforts are associated with the Vay Foundation, then I would ask this board to direct its contractor, the Vay Foundation, to put its efforts into a long-awaited fundraising campaign. Business at Deer Park Neighbors, the website is business as usual. And thank you very much for listening this evening.
Next item in the comment section?
First item I have on the agenda is payer request number two for burger estimating for what they had completed last year on Lakewood Road for the drain cow improvement project. The funds for that project, as a reminder, is all through the special service area and none of the fund are through the general funds. The amount of payer request is $18,946 and I would recommend approval on that if anyone has any questions. Answer them. Burger estimating related to the current spending.
Second, any discussion, just to verify case? This is SSA five?
Correct.
People not know SSA, that's a special on the setup by the villagers. The triangle is, one was originally Mulholland, which is now, now Chapel Hill, is now one of the shops. So these funds are being paid out of the SSA funds, no funds are coming out of the local.
Right.
We have a motion, second, no further discussion. Hold on, please. Motion carries?
All right, the next item is regarding the Vay site improvements to the drainage around the western and northern side of the barns. I provided a sketch and an estimate of the cost. You'd be more than happy to go over the proposal. The trustees would like to discuss it. One item, the estimate of cost that we presented was based on numbers from other storm sewer-related projects. That's why the numbers somewhat high, a little bit conservative. One thing we can do is pursue either a landscape contractor, underground contractor to do this work and I feel that we could probably get this project done under $10,000.
The type of reasons for the improvement is water's been coming out of this building?
Correct. It's basically the original grading of the barn site needs improvements and the idea is to try to take some of the roof drains and take it to the existing storm sewer that's closer to the center of the property.
Where does that range?
The storm sewer? It drains to the detention pond. Right.
This is both sides of the building, is it?
It would be for the northern end of the building. It would just be regrading of some of the topography and out by the main entrance. It would actually be installing some other drains and catch basins and minor regrading of property. So at this time, I would recommend that I go and meet with a couple contractors and get a couple quotes to perform the work and present it at the next board meeting.
Tom, do you want to post one with the dollar amount or do you want to proceed with the amount?
Right. I would have to come back with the proposals and present it to the board. For approvals.
Does this include the grading where the work was done to replace the hole? Which is to the west towards Butterfly Garden?
We can include the grading work over by the subdeck area. I was anticipating I'd get in the number for that also.
One project?
Right.
Are you saying that possibly the contractor who used the pump work is supposed to do that? The grading?
No, the final grade, filling it in. He had to keep it exposed until the county inspector approved it. This could be included in that quote. I'm also asked a landscape contractor, at least to fill it in and come back with a life during the season. We can now fill it in.
I think you want to do, if you agree with this, direct the village engineer to solicit several proposals and come back at the June meeting with a recommendation.
Does anyone have an issue with letting the village engineer receive any quotes on this? Okay. Now, if you're going to have any objections?
Just one question, are we going to run into trouble because we missed rain and we won't be able to grow the seed? If we improve it in June, we got run in by a dry season or something like that?
There's potential, you know, if it's a dry season, but typically what we can do is do the work in July and do the restoration seeding in mid-August is typically when you want to do it.
Okay, Tom, item number C?
The next item, we've worked with Eila Township for the last several years on this project, which is routine maintenance of the storm sewers and culverts in various subdivisions. And for this year, we're looking at Eila Township to clean out the storm sewers and culverts in the Dover Pond subdivision, Chapel Hill subdivision, Hamilton Estates. And what we had budgeted for this year in similar years in the past is $10,000 to complete that work. That's just the budget amount. And what Eila Township Highway Department has indicated that they can start the work within the next couple weeks. Go ahead.
There's also an agreement with Eila that we had in the past where they do some mosquito payment. Is that something you're thinking here or someone else doing that?
I'm not working on that one.
Dave, I've talked to Bill on that and they will continue during that service under their non-smoke plowing contract.
Okay, so let's take care of that.
Yes. And the other?
One quick question. The pond outlet, $3,500, that's in the budget, right?
That is in the budget.
Which of this is in the budget?
What was the question, Bob?
Pond outlet, I want to make sure because all these items are included in the budget. I'm not sure how it's described in the budget. Pond outlet for $3,500, the various categories in the Wolf Pond. All the structure limits? Okay. All the items are fully budgeted, so it should be no problem.
This is more as advisory, indicate that they're going to be starting the work. Works, the plans, the program's already budgeted. And in the past, we've gotten approvals.
Tom, how are you going to track the dollar amounts to make sure we're not seeing?
We work with Eila Township and they understand what the budget is, but they make sure they stay within the budget. And if there's additional work that we need to do, if we're under the $10,000, we would evaluate other areas in town to see if we need additional work done. But typically, we stay within the limits of the subdivisions that we propose.
Would you repeat where that's going to go again? I got Dover and I didn't write any of the others down.
The Chapel Hill subdivision and Hamilton Estates.
Do we have other communities in Hamilton that are doing it? Have we had some sort of vote, have we had some sort of voting program?
Yes. Actually, we completed Hamilton Estates and Chapel Hill subdivision four years ago. So we're now back in the process of going through the other subdivisions again. And with that, the root cutting program, Eila Township would be doing. And what that, what we would need your polls in there is we have known storm sewers and culverts that continually have roots that grow inside the culverts and it's more cost-effective to do the root cutting program on an annual basis and take care of those to prevent backup of water in the ditches.
Tom, I have to have a question. I know the village trees are a big enemy messing up all the drains and culverts. Is Bob going to do a survey? I mean, we can keep robbing these out year after year. Reach a point where we can best, we can treat, start robbing these things out every year? Or caution for out?
There's a question. I heard it from Robert.
That's a good question.
Well, if it's in the village, right?
Well, some of the areas where we're doing the root cutting is actually with easements between properties. So in those areas, we've actually just did the root cutting. It seemed to be more cost-effective versus, we've actually, it was probably five years ago where we had a similar situation and we lined the storm sewer and which prevented the roots to come back. But that cost was about, I want to say $7,000. But that was a major outlet structure that we needed to make sure that we didn't have any at all in there. Right, correct, Lancaster detention pond?
That one's old enough?
Yes. It had an ink once, since we did it.
So I'm just concerned if we're going back year after year after year, you know, continuing the root cut, you know, plus it's carrying on the structure made in a week or is that not there?
Yeah, right now, there's only, I want to say there's probably four or five known culverts or storm sewers that we do this maintenance to. And then when Eila Township comes in and cleans the other subdivisions, that's when we, if they found a problem with their cleaning or can't get their chatter through, then they come in and root cut areas. So that's what that budget amounts for.
Do you have any issues with doing this work? Now, you're going to say? I have a view for Romney commercial places?
Yes, the next item is, there's some lighting out Deer Park Boulevard and Field Parkway within the Triangle area. And the quote that I got from Omni, commercial lighting services, I estimated, anticipated a few different scenarios if the ballast or the lamps are out. I would recommend a budget of $1,700 for Omni Electric to come out and either replace the lamps or replace the ballast.
And I have a question here. I have similar problems with the park. Charlie Brown has two lights that are out. I regret I haven't taken the time to go look and see if we have parking in Dover, any in Chapel. I think that's the only other place we have parking other than in Thompson.
There are no lights in Dover and I'm fairly certain that there's no lights in that.
I had a conversation with village administrator. How do we take care of the lights in Charlie Brown? I don't know what to do with the parks, the lights are out. I need to get them replaced, otherwise I'm sure the police team's going to ask me to take them place, so these officers need to see what's going on in that.
What I could do is when they're out doing the work at Deer Park Boulevard and Field Parkway, I can have them take a look at that and give us a quote. It's a simple just lamp replacement, I'm sure would be within that $1,700 budget. We can have them.
Jim is saying here on that, what you and I talked about? About those, the lights in Charlie Brown, is that a conflict with it?
Yeah, I think we talked about possibly contacting Eila. I think this is a better currently at the moment.
Can Eila can do this as well?
Actually, they can.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can check with, well, we're talking about Omni commercial lighting for the Deer Park Boulevard, Eila Parkway. Either way, I can check with Eila Highway Department.
Let me just ask the question. If Eila's want to do it for less money, why wouldn't we consider Eila for this as well?
For the Charlie Brown one?
For the Charlie Brown and for the Thompson?
For the Thompson, I don't believe they have an aerial truck to do that work.
And how would they do the one in Charlie Brown?
They're lower. Actually, I think they're like 10, 15 feet.
There's somewhere between 10 and 15.
They're 15, 18 feet off the ground.
Well, then we would need to...
If they'll look at it, make a decision. They're about 15, 18 feet off the ground.
I think there's some other reason why it's more cost-effective to build this company in the Triangle because there are other maintenance items more than just changing lights and they also serve the electric as well.
Yeah, they would be able to evaluate the ballast to be able to replace the ballast and if there's an issue beyond either a lamp or a ballast, they would need to report back and then we'd have to make another decision on how to do repairs at additional cost.
I would suggest that the good idea is to include Charlie Brown with the Triangle maintenance rather than with the Triangle maintenance that Eila Township. And I think this money, $1,700, I'm not exactly sure where that comes, comes out of one of the maintenance accounts under its, under its cost.
Yeah, we did this probably two years ago where we ran into the same situation where lights were out and we budgeted 200 and when we got the bill back, it was 400 bucks. All they had to do was replace the lamps.
I need to ask one more question.
Sure.
And I'll take your off line. I got to ask the contractor about the main for the lights at that point.
In the past, it's always come under miscellaneous, Eila expensive. Never budgeted under, under Charlie Brown.
I need to contact that company. There's only, only budget of guiding cars that's for you.
Yeah, I don't know the exact answer to that. We have to take back to, I suspect it's under the same, you know, it's picked up under utilities along with the rest of the, the rest of the electric.
Tom, do you need a motion to prove $1,700 for not just $1,700?
Yes.
Moving second, further discussion?
I'm still confused. Are we including Charlie Brown in this or not?
Yes. If it's more, if it's something different, I'll...
If it's more...
I'll get a full form of the contractor on what the specific issue is.
Moving second, hold on, please.
Yes.
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 The next item, status in the annual park maintenance repair?
From discussions with Eila Township Highway Department, their schedule is to start work tomorrow, subject to rain. If it does rain, they're looking to do the work on Wednesday to do the repairs.
I'm trying to do the work.
I would say one to two days.
Dave, do you want to make account regards to how it's going to be paid for? You know, there was some discussion regards to this could be allocated in the last month of the power budget?
I guess my only comment is that this should go to the appropriate fund, which I think is the drainage. So these funds should come out of the drainage budget, is the way I see it.
And it has to come into this year's budget, you can add?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Go ahead, Tom, you have a question?
First of all, you should do the drainage, I think it's part drainage, it's not bowl drainage.
I don't have a part drainage.
Okay.
I'm being facetious, but Bob, keep your drainage out like parks.
Just to clarify on the work... Just to clarify on the work, the majority of the storm sewer work will be in one to two days and then the path would be redone probably a few weeks later.
All right, let's make sure it's all, I guess, marked off, not everything through the water. We can come up and.
Okay.
You can see down the parts, we have to make sure it's properly marked off.
Todd, I got three items, some of which I've gone over with you, but one is Rainbow Road. Part of the trustees have mentioned the cost of redoing Rainbow Road, what it's involved. We don't even have an engineering estimate of what it would cost to document Rainbow Road. For example, right now, to clarify the issue, we are fixing potholes and structural problems. But as far as the drainage, multiple sizzles culverts, we have no idea what that is and we have no formal budget amount for that. Is that true?
Correct. For, for the road program, we included miscellaneous patchwork to happen on Rainbow Road. I believe Rainbow Road's scheduled for either next year, two years to be patched and overlaid with the new surface. One, one consideration the board should think about is addressing some of the drainage on Rainbow Road because right now, when it rains, the water just goes right to the edge of the road and it's easier for the drip, the moisture and water to get under into the base. But to do improvements to Rainbow Road, we would have to cut back some of the trees within the right of way through there to address the drainage with either ditches and/or storm sewer. So that would be something that we would want to consider in the upcoming budgets.
Todd, we're in a possible, there's time, some of the wood lines are now pulled so much out of there.
I believe the right of way is either 60 to 66 feet and from what I recall, the tree line goes pretty far back. I don't, I don't, I'd have to, we'd have to do a survey and see how the trees fall within the right of way.
So the reason we're in this up is, does this board want to authorize, see what the multiple, the multiple estimate, what it costs to do this? And show what the engineering cost would be first. Because I presume they would like to do the, have the engineering cost to show, based upon that, be able to do. And also, you give us if we have any engineering estimate, we also know what it's gonna cost to move this and do the drainage issues. And that, that's really quite a, it could be a sizable number.
But if we're not gonna do anything this year, wouldn't it make sense for him not to do the survey this year because the cost will probably go up for next year or the year after, whenever Rainbow's scheduled?
This is just a survey. You would want the survey done prior to doing the order. The road is not scheduled for 2010. And right now, for example, it's been realistic for five years behind. So there's no urgency, but we have to know what the number is. It's nice to say when people will done. I think it should be done, but if you don't have price tag on that. So we don't want to worry about that.
Todd, could you come back with a estimate on the engineering cost maybe?
Yes.
Prior to the discussion or anything? There's an idea or it might be, are you familiar with what the issues are?
Right, yeah.
The next, the next item I had is, Todd and I had a discussion with the two contractors. Both contractors stated that they were gonna have physically the equipment presence, they have a manpower present. They have grinders, cutters, backhoes, all this equipment available on site. We have $40,000 in our budget for road repair, crack. I think that this would be an appropriate time, you know, well, you know, very good investment to go ahead. Have Todd, with Todd and I come up with a list of priorities and get submit bids, make bids from these two contractors who really want to, really want to do the work and come up with some very competitive numbers rather than have Yilla Township take a shovel and put some blacktop in. You could actually grind the mistake, patch the mistake. The mistake requires putting gravel in, gravel in, everything, all the equipment, all facilities on time. And expand our road repair that we have right now and get a much better return on investment than we gave them best.
I think that sounds like a great idea. Would, do they have the time available though? Don't they schedule their whole summer with major projects?
We had the pre-construction meetings with both contractors and they said they'd be willing to work with the village.
The, the one condition is, is they'd like to know before they start their stuff because it's all predicated on having all this equipment and all these assets available.
Right now, both contractors, the general fund contractor, all constructions actually start work tomorrow in countries and corners subdivision. And Gueske is probably gonna start after Memorial Day with their work. But I would anticipate we'll probably, we probably have a couple of weeks. Right now, in the motor field tax fund road program, we already have quite a bit of quantity for patchwork. So what we're gonna do is measure out the patches, see where we're at within the budget of the original contract and then determine if we can get additional work done within the quantities we have. And then, then after that, move forward to look at some of the other subdivisions and figure out the bad areas that we should patch after, you know, the winter we have.
Let me, two months to probably, I'd like to make a motion to get a proposal done for the village engineer. Do not dispend more than $40,000. It's become a priority for road patching repairs. Will it be done in the next 10, 15 days?
It wasn't an, an item that was appropriate one. It's not a motion. Although we can do is, it's time to go ahead and do negotiation, is that correct? To get the work done. You know what, you know what extra dollars we have, we have funding, our bids ended up.
Right.
All the appropriated for the road drainage this year.
Correct.
Do you know if that delta is there?
Yes.
Do you work within that delta?
Yes.
Can that, can you come back and approve that?
We didn't go there. I don't even know if you have to approve anything because these are budgeted funds. What we're, what we're talking about here is they came in under budget with their bids. Therefore, I don't think we have to take any action from a financial point of view on the board, other than simply saying to the engineer and to trustee Kelman, come up with a list of where the best place is to spend the $40,000 that came in under budgeting from the bids, where you want to spend that on road. That, that's the only question. I don't think there's any motion. We have to just simply go after that.
Yeah, that's my.
I agree.
I agree too. I just have one question. Will you be setting aside any money for next spring? I mean, we saw what terrible shape the roads were in the spring and I know you had to do some patching with Yilla Township. Will there be anything left over in case we have another bad winter?
We do. Probably $5,000.
Okay.
The other item I got is, the other item is, we have a partnership agreement. The roads were, Todd would do the engineering and the homeowner would do the work. That has come up again. I addressed that issue. I sent a letter to President Gifford and to trustee Kaiser. And so what I'd like to do is to have us re-entertain that because I think it could be for the mutual benefit of both parties. And that individuals can potentially spend $5,000. And he feels that, whatever happened in the past, happened in the past. He'd like the village to pick up Todd's cross and also to the culvert on the street east or north of that to power that. I think these are both within the budget. We give both that and we can end up with one problem going.
You can make that proposal and just have the trustee Kaiser and myself make that decision.
No, but I think you're supposed to have that information. That's information. I'm just saying that the proposal I'm saying is the start of partnership agreement. How would this gentleman, you have to confirm that with the data or if you don't want to do it, you don't do it. But that's information that was related to me, that was prior to my tenure and both you gentlemen are familiar with it. I'm just saying this is a way that was out that issue.
You guys know where to open with your last group?
It's the same issue. Yes.
Are you gonna sign up to vote? Are you, are you, I think, for a vote for that expenditure tonight? Or would you want the money?
No, I really, I was gonna vote on it because I thought it'd be a good way to start the program along this year. And it'd be seventh, President Gifford and trustee Kaiser's response.
Well, I think the program's a very good program, but we can't vote unless it's on the agenda, right? So if you want us to pay next month, it's gotta be on the agenda, correct?
Well, I think one of the items that he's talking about, we could actually, it involves cleaning out one of the culverts in this, on this road, Deer Valley Road. And that could be covered under Yilla Township's budget amount for storm sewer clean. We can just have the township go out and jet off the culvert, make sure it's clear. And if it's, if it's plugged and they are able to clear that solves part of the problem, I think.
Would you have a hopeful line? What should I have?
The, I would make sure it's within Yilla's budget for storm sewer clean.
And that, I think they're the trust of the decision to, we want to do some one to the other person for some other item.
What other engineering fees he was talking about, fees, what, are there some other statistics projects?
Well, last year, we actually did some of the work as part of this program where we did local topography. We shot grades out there to see how, what would need to be done. And it was more extensive work than I think the resident wanted it to be. So.
What, do you want to come up with a different solution this year?
Well, I, I think there's a question of a culvert that might be blocked. And if we can determine if it's blocked or clear, then it'd make the decision a little bit easier.
It sounds to me that as long as we're within budget, you can blow that culvert out. It's the first step, right? And look at, look at what remains after that.
Correct.
That's the first step.
Person chased around the community for a while. But due to our street pothole issue on Rainbow Road and Deer Valley Road, he hasn't been to repeat speed.
So, so Bobby, you're in the middle of a dilemma, right?
He was a very good gentleman. He said it. Did a fine job.
Okay, any other items, Todd?
Well, that's it.
Okay, Todd, thank you. Let's get the Bay Farm Foundation real quick. Everything okay there? Okay. All the Bay Farm Foundation items are in the book, the decree. What we need is approval of payment of the Jensen money for $5,437. That was the most important goal of this process. And you should have, it's under item seven D, your.
And we approved payment of Jensen money, $5,437.
I'll second, then I'll ask Jim, how is the ownership of these things?
Any other questions?
Discussion?
Yes.
Okay. This is not, this is an unbudgeted item for the E Farm construction. This was another item in it from the budget?
So, so Bobby, beat me to it. This is another one that we would hold the offset somewhere else in the budget?
No, what I'm trying to say is that this invoice is dated.
January 21st.
January 21st is the first time we're hearing about it. How come we got invoices? Maybe my concept of budgets is wrong. I always thought a budget was a core ending policy, which we follow certain trends and came up with certain dollar numbers. You have the drainage issue, it's a not budgeted item. We have this item that's been around for five months, it's not included in the budget. Where, where is the logic of what the budget goes?
So, so Bobby, you're bringing up the exact same issue that I've been trying to stress to the rest of us. And the idea is, you know, there's always gonna be things that aren't in the budget. Really, really is the approach that we take when we show up. This one, just like Michelangelo Park, things we really need to go fix. But we should do these knowing full well that there's something else we're gonna choose not to spend on the road and try and keep the budget fairly balanced. I mean, that's, that's all we can do. I mean, there's only so much that we're gonna know about when we make the budget.
Todd, what are you suggesting we do? Not pay Jensen money for the work because the bill's coming back?
My question is, firstly, this is not a budgeted item. Secondly, is board members were never, never asked even bone on this item.
What are you suggesting we do?
Unfortunately, you have 220, 260,000 worth of contingency funds. It should go in the E Farm foundation, be applied to your contingency funds.
Todd, what are you proposing we do?
Just like that.
I, I don't understand. What are you proposing we do? We have a bill to pay. What are you proposing we do?
I propose that, number one, you have a budget. The budget should be a zero-based budgeting so that all the things are properly anticipated for the year. The fact that you have $260,000 contingencies for unexpected items is good. And this is the reason why you have them. But the fact that we have an item that we have an invoice for in January that is not budgeted, the fact that we have a drainage issue last month that is not budgeted, both of these could have been cleared, amended in the budget and makes it look like the board is more responsive to the needs of the residents. They're anticipating what's happening. The fact that we're using uncommitted funds or the contingency funds, this, this really, I think, poor budgeting practice.
If the board was not aware of this, how would we have budgeted for it?
It's a January invoice.
It didn't arrive until May.
Didn't arrive until May.
You see, it was held up in the law.
What was the invoice before March?
It says here from, as Brooke Peterson, that it fell through the cracks and it was originally invoiced to Pepper Company. So anyway, the main thing is it did fall through the cracks. I'm glad it got into some fun. I am sorry that certain things happen the way they do. But I think we should go ahead.
What are you suggesting we do? Not pay the bill or not pay the bill?
My comments are self-explanatory. You have to pay the bill, number one. Number two is, if the firm is responsible for paper, for paperwork, they'll be responsible for the paperwork. If the village does not have paperwork, then that's self-explanatory. The village does not want to maintain the paper.
So you recommend we do pay the bill?
I'm not saying anything right now.
Can I make a motion?
Go ahead. I'm gonna move. Moving second. Any further discussion on it? Okay, you're both up, please.
Dusty Piper?
Yes.
Dusty Ryder?
Yes.
Dusty Puck?
Yes.
Dusty Kelerman?
No.
Dusty Cracker?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion carries. I, I understand your reasoning, but I, I think just because the bill is turning late doesn't mean individuals should have to pay. But that's, that's my personal opinion. Answer for Bay Farm, trustee Ryder, if you'd like to go in.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I apologize to fellow board members and the public, but I, because I just don't feel like, I just don't understand. I don't mind if this will be.
First of all, I'm very pleased to hear that that work's gonna be done in D'Angelo. There is a resident, and I just want to make it public that a resident is allowing the maintenance organization to cross private, private. maintenance organization to cross private property in order to do the maintenance of Deangelo. You do not see their name there, nor am I mentioning their name at their request, because they don't want people to think they've got, everybody can just trot across their land in order to get to the park. Hopefully, this will get done in short order this week, and we can go back to using the path for access to the park. Secondly, I was going to note, and I'm reading quite pleased by what they're doing, is that the Deer Park Town Center, the folks that are over 500, uh, not 500, over 50 hours were spent maintaining that field on a volunteer basis by the folks who are using the field. The mailing has been sent out and a positive response has been received from the businesses in Deer Park with regard to the sponsorship for the wind screens. In fact, half the first check is already in, and I'm not sure that it's actually been ordered, because I didn't talk to village staff about that today, whether it's been, and I expect that there will be several more coming this week. And I am soliciting some others in the village to assist me to do full coverage of that particular piece. So that's going forward, that will underwrite the cost of the wind screens for the ball field. Very important matter we have to discuss is regarding the path in the Charlie Brown from Ferndale. I have had meetings with both the landowner who owns the path. The path is under an agreement between the village and the landowner that states that they have rights every so many years, five years if ever twelve, probably it might be four, that they can cancel the agreement. They do not desire to cancel the agreement. They desire to leave the agreement in place that has us, that allows for a three-foot wide path into Charlie Brown from Ferndale. And their, their thought process is, as the original landowner was when this was done, to, so that those who wish to use Charlie Brown Park from the south have access, easy access to the park and don't have to cut across their land. They have some difficulties and some problems that they asked me to bring forward that I'm prepared for at this time. The path is actually about four feet wide, not three feet, that's contracted, and I didn't get a chance, because I've been out of town after I talked with them, to talk to attorney about it, but I will be doing it next week, and I don't have time this week to do it. But we need to determine whether or not, we need to get the attorney a copy of that agreement. Jim, would you make sure that Attorney Kelly gets a copy of that agreement, so he can review the agreement? The path is actually four feet wide, when you count the timbers that are on the side, and I need to know whether we need to get that agreement modified to four feet. Secondly, need to know whether I need to get that, that agreement modified for five feet wide to be ADA compliant, or can we continue the path as it has been done historically? Second problem I've got, well, there are problems that I'm not going to note. The residents on either side of that park, and they are, they are willing to take the shrubberies back so I can do proper maintenance of the, of the facility. They do want a number, one particular contract piece of that agreement that they want upheld. That agreement states that there shall be no parking on Lee, and I forget if Lee Road or Lee Street, basically, at the end of that particular drive, that's what the agreement states, and that the parking is there by implication, it doesn't truly say it in the agreement, should be down in the Cultus Act where there are no homes at this particular point in time, at the end of that particular drive. And they are asking that we put signage up to do that. That signage is not something that can be budgeted in this particular year within the parks or anywhere else within the budget that I know of. So we need to fulfill our part of the agreement. Third, another part of the agreement that they have, that they are not interested in us, they are not interested in doing, is that they are entitled to $1 a year for that, and they'd like to leave it in there for a moment. Now, I'll have to get to the attorney about this thing. Now, the reason I'm bringing this up to the board as a whole, is I really, you know, I guess I need to believe it, to be honest. I really haven't planned to spend as much money on this path as it's turning out to be, as I get deeper into it, because what the homeowners would like me to do, they'd like me to not, to prevent the stones, gravel that is used on the path from washing into their flowerbed, reasonable request. They, they'd like me to make the riders on the side of the path higher, so the motorized vehicles, four-wheel vehicles and motorized scooters, don't use the path and cut across their lawn, which is going on. And we did make an arrangement that if I raise, you raise the side pieces up, they'll put a bench in a particular place to prevent that from happening. So hopefully, we can get those things done. I'm going to leave, I'm going to leave. I, I, I hope to, I was hoping to get some money left over from another thing this evening, but I need to figure out a way to get this done very economically. But I, I first need to find out what we have with the agreement, and I, that's what I've told the homeowners, I got to check that out, and I just have that chance to do that. But I want to look forward, and that's something that's got to come back before I can actually get to working.
Can I ask a question about the agreement? I'm a little bit concerned about agreeing to, although I guess it's probably been in effect for many years, the no parking on the street, because we've had complaints from other residents in other parts of the village about people parking cars on the street for days on end, that our leaking oil and our eyesores and things, and we've not been able to give them any relief. So I'm a little bit concerned about picking and choosing where we say no parking and where we say we don't.
If it is possible, you lose the path.
If we, if we don't agree to that situation?
Well, it's something that's been in effect, which is why I think the board just simply needs to know to do that, we need to hear from our attorney, and we can go through it after I discuss it with them in the weeks ahead, and then make the determination based on this council next month. It is, I've already told the residents, it's not something that I'm going to get resolved at this meeting, because I have to advise you of it, and have to get the research, Jim. From the time that I met with them till I went out of town and came back yesterday, I hadn't had a chance to redo that documentation properly.
I have a question. You had mentioned something, you were concerned about the cost of the work on the pathway.
Yeah, yes.
What about any of the monies, if the windscreen program is successful, can any of the monies be used from the windscreen program for that purpose?
Well, the monies for the windscreen program are really rolled into the wind screens themselves. In other words, we bought blank wind screens, and some of the profit from the selling of a specific number of the wind screens with advertising on them, we then subsequently paid for the ones that are blank.
The blank ones we have to...
Right, and, and now it's turning out that, now they're ripping off around the, around the dudettes, the wind is just tearing right off. We, we're going to have to take them in at the end of the year, that's the issue that's never been done. So we have to take them in. So I need to protect that. I have hopes, we can talk about it in a moment, I have hopes that I'll come under budget in another area to find a way to get this done. But one of the problems I'm having is just what material to use on that path, and it's going to boil down to whether I have to be ADA compliant or not. If the path's only three feet wide and I'm not ADA compliant by the width of the path, do I have to be compliant with regard to the material of the path? I don't want to use the large stones that were suggested by the homeowners, because I'm comics to them, where I wouldn't be very comfortable with that, because I'd be afraid of the kids picking up the rocks and throwing them.
And the limestone screening also may affect the soil.
Well, actually, the gravel themselves, the white gravel that you see in the path is in the beds, and it's all the way out on the driveway to the grass.
All right.
Okay, the next item I got to talk about, which again isn't good news, is last month you gave me $2,000 to do the trees, as you recall. This has to do with the Zimmerman pine lots, and I believe you have a handout on this with a spreadsheet that I gave you, that lists the parks that have trees where we did the audit, and then we also did the audit of just what kind of trees were there. We were focused on pines and cedars. Let me explain to you what has happened with this to begin with. First of all, we are able to save the third and fourth tree to be removed. That's the honey locust by the entrance at Charlie Brown, and the entrance of the large limb and the tree that's already down now at the entrance of the village office and of this complex of E. Those two items are being done by the county. So we no longer have to worry about those particular items, so $780 and $600 is meant for them. Now let's talk about what the people at Autumn Tree told me, when we did an audit and walked each of these parks that you see listed here. You see the inventory of the number of Austrian pines, Scotch pines, white pines, spruces, cypress, and red cedars. You see a few editorial comments that were provided to me, is that he was suggesting, don't put in white pines. In this environment, in this soil, they will not survive, and after four or five years, they, they turn yellow, and he showed me mature trees on private property, particularly around Dover Pond, that that's exactly the case, that they, these trees are yellow. So he said, don't put in any more white pines. On the other hand, he said, if you can find cypress and red cedar, which is why they're listed here, in lieu of those, that's the thing to do, those are high-voltage trees that will go very well as to me. All right, now, you originally, what we budgeted was $2,000, and you asked me last month to stay within $2,000 for this tree piece, and I said, well, what do you want me to do about the rest of the parks? And what we did was 100% inventory. You see there the inventory, and what we would have to treat are the trees in Austrian pines, Scotch pines, and the white pines. The spruces, the cypress, and the red cedars do not be treated. So only of those three columns we need to treat them. You therefore see the appropriate dollars that go with that. In order to treat those, it's $3,875 to treat those three categories of trees, and $450 to remove the two dead trees in Charlie Brown Park, for a total of $4,325. Since this exceeds what you gave me in the budget of $2,000, I'm coming back to you to find out if that's exactly what you want to do, or do you only want to treat the trees and remove the dead trees in Charlie Brown?
Well, I can see right away if the, if he says white pines are, are going to die within four to five years, we can save $180 right there.
That's not what I said. That is not what I said there. What I said is they're going to turn yellow, so they're not going to die, they're just going to turn yellow.
Yellow.
Okay, if you choose to, I just...
So they're no longer attractive, in other words?
That's, that's the point he's making, is it's not a quality tree, and as a result of that being a quality tree, after a few years, it just into the yellows, continues to stand, loses...
Then I vote not to treat the white pines.
What's the vote?
I'll, we're treating the Austrians, the Scots, and the white pines, and he's just got it all lumped together in there, and I'd have to go back and get another quote.
Well, there's some that have just white pines.
Uh, yeah, I guess that's the village complex as an example, you're correct. And one of the B farm, he broke that into two pieces. Excuse me, so we'd be talking about 500, excuse me, $585 just from the village office and the B farm, where they're exclusively whites. You're correct, yeah.
What's the big, Joel, what's your recommendation?
I, I, I don't, I don't have a recommendation. I, I guess my comment goes back to what you and Dave said in the last, you know, the original budget meeting in the last month. My biggest concern with being not treating the white pines is if they become diseased, and do they then affect the other trees? I know that it was a result of the efforts of people seeing us walk the parks. I go with three parks, homeowners got business cards, and he, I'm getting more business out of this deal, because other people are going to treat the trees that are on their private property, I don't see they saw what was going on. Including people incidentally on the Deangelo, I mean, Charlie Brown, yeah. So I guess my recommendation is, if you're going to do disease prevention, we're probably only talking $1,000 over the $4,300 in total. I, I think I would just go ahead and do the whole thing. I don't, I don't know any better. I will tell you, walking around, you can see what the moors and the blight, and once you point it out to you, I understand it. Until then, I had no idea what I was talking about.
All right, so I can restate, your recommendation then is to go ahead and treat the program for $4,325 potential litigation?
That's correct. And remember, I only have $2,000 to do this.
You do, you do at least $3,000.
Took out the $7,500, you did, a couple other things that some previous, first of all, get in there. I don't remember that I took that out, but if I got there, I got, I, I just think we should do the whole thing. I can't see any way, I'm going to try and save money in other areas.
Do you have a motion then?
I move that we go forward with Autumn Trees to do the whole proposal here of $4,325 to treat them, as you see listed there, and to remove the two dead trees on Charlie Brown Park.
Move in a second, any further discussion? Both of them, please.
Rusty Ryder?
Yes.
Rusty Puck?
Yes.
Rusty Kellerman?
Yes.
Rusty Preacher?
Yes.
Rusty Frye?
Yes.
Rusty Piper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. The next item that I've got is, Todd, it may be good, a proposal to purchase play, play equipment for the old farm road, and also for the replacement of mulch for the play lots. Again, the lay has cost us a few dollars. Let me talk, let me speak first to the mulch part, which is the mulch that is ADA improved in order to put that into the top lots. We have budgeted $9,000, I believe, is that correct, yeah, $9,000? Well, we had to handle it. And the bid has come up to $9,043, it's within the parameters of 10% of what it'd be in the appropriation ordinance. So what I'd like is approval to go forward, purchase the mulch. I'll have the mulch dropped at four sites, Chapel Hill, Charlie Brown, Deangelo, it's three sites, remember? Chapel Hill, Charlie Brown, Dover, and Mike Land, that's right. Yeah, that's right. At those four sites, and then I have a, then I'm going to have the landscaper that we're using to do the park maintenance do this for a few hundred dollars to spread that mulch. We'll take the old mulch out, we'll put that around the trees in the respective parks where necessary, and we'll become ADA compliant in cited parks, with regard to the top lots of the existing play lots. So what I'm asking is a motion to approve spending the $9,043 that is coming now added to, for the mulch or the top, the existing play lots. Will you support that?
What was that, the $7,000?
It's $9,043.
$9,045, my mistake.
You're separating out the play equipment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm making them do separate quotes whenever I can.
Do you have a motion, second, second for the motion?
Yes, I do. I, I guess I was expecting to see some paperwork, or even if it was just a summary of this, whether it be the play equipment or the replacement mulch.
I, I actually do have the quote, if you'd like to see it.
I would have preferred seen it, I guess, yeah.
I didn't get, I didn't get it till today. Although I had it on the agenda, it was supposed to be provided to me while I was out of town last week, and I didn't get it till today after I reminded him, and we apologize that he was off, he was way behind, because a lot of villagers are currently are coming back like this, and he had to, they had to...
So are we still legal not having the dollar?
I'm not legal, Jim.
Yeah, because it is on the item, and we have the other dollar, but it is on there.
Okay, I have a small problem with the quote that he gave me today, which is why I'm not passing it out, I can get a copy of it. He left off my benches that I wanted for the old farm, so he left those off of the quote. So the quote I have here is lacking the cost. The cost is not going to come in at $24,000, the cost is going to come in at $20,000, about, $21,500, once I get the benches put back in, because he left those off of the quote. And that's why I'm not handing, or what I'd like to do, because I'd like to go forward on this, because if I can get him the same, it's the same vendor for supply of the mulch and the play equipment, and if I can get this done properly, I'll reduce my freight charges. And that's what I want to do, because I want to therefore put forward to spend the money for the play equipment for $21,500.
Okay, we have, we have not approved the $9,000.
Oh, I'm in there. I'm losing it, I'm in the line group.
Okay, all right, that's fair enough. We're back right there.
Higher.
I need to know who, $9,450 was coming.
Oh, thank you. Recreation concepts incorporated. Need to answer this or anything?
Okay, you have a motion, trust me, that's a second. Any further discussion? Both of them, please.
Rusty Puck?
Yes, for the mulch.
Rusty Kellerman?
Yes.
Rusty Preacher?
Yes.
Rusty Frye?
Yes.
Rusty Piper?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. My apologies for asking. Now, with regard to the, it's going to be $21,500 for the play equipment. The play equipment would be the same color play equipment that exists at the village today in the other four places where there is play equipment. It will blend in with the area because it says, if you go to the parks this year, it's a brown and green combination. And it'll be $21,500, including the benches, installation, and everything. So this includes everything. The village will not have to do anything. Will have no site preparation, because the ground is basically level. They will prepare the ground, they will mulch the ground, they will make it ADA compliant, they will do the whole thing, for the $21,500.
I'll second it, but then I have a comment.
Say it's a motion.
Okay.
Oh, same thing then. Recreation concepts incorporated.
Also, I think what we need to add onto this is, Village Attorney first wants to review any type of liabilities and/or legal issues involving homeowners across the street to make sure the village and everyone is covered on this.
Yeah, if we, that's fine. I don't have any problems with that. And we can add that to the motion. And then when I come back to town next week, I'll get in contact with him on both this matter and the path matter for Charlie Brown out of the, out of the.
Marine, second, as amended?
As amended, but I think I have another amendment as well. I did hear from some of the homeowners that they really would like that sign saying private property, no trespassing, no swimming. And I don't know if we can authorize that, if it would have to sit on the right of way, or if we can give a sign that would sit on private property. I don't know the legalities of that.
I think we can probably work something out with the owners.
Well, what if they don't want to pay for it? I mean, could this-
I really should pay for that.
Marine, be aware of what you're saying here. And you made a comment about earlier regarding the parking, going 180 degrees the other way, the issue with regard to the swimming or fishing side of private property versus what you're saying about Charlie Brown Park.
Path.
Because the Charlie Brown Park path is something that we have in agreement. So all I'm saying is we need to be consistent, and I'm going to defer to the attorney and let him tell me next week what that needs to be. So I really don't want to accept your motions and your modifications.
Well, I must, the parking is something that's on village roads, that's public property.
No, it isn't. Parking is on village roads, and part of their problem is that parking, when they park on the village roads, they're parking in front of their driveways, and they're parking on their grass.
Okay, well, that's a different issue. But parking, I was talking about parking on public roads, whereas these people would like the sign to apply to their private property. They feel like we're bringing in a public nuisance, and they're asking us to do something.
All right, if that's one, if one resident can do that, I have two residents in, um, I'll take the name right. Squires that want to remove those same kind of signs for swimming and fishing. And I haven't brought that matter forward, because there was only two.
But that's, we own the pond and squires, don't we? That's part of our public park. And this, the whole point is this is a private pond, and the private homeowners are worried that by us putting in the park, that we're creating the public nuisance, and they're asking us as some remedy to give them a sign that will say, "Don't trespass, it's private property."
I think I'd rather put a motion. I want to defer to the attorney, let him tell me if that's something that we need to do.
Well, it would be okay if the attorney looks into the issue and gives us a recommendation or if that was the case.
I think that should be considered as part of what the attorney, what's that?
I agree.
Because he's going to tell us if we have to make that change.
Well, it's not even so much that we have to, as do we want to do it as a gesture to the homeowners? Can we do it? I guess not so much do we have to.
I think we should defer to our village attorney regardless of letting me make this motion. But I think he understands the issue here. Okay. Any other discussions or items?
Are we taking a final vote on this parking today because?
That's, what the motion is right now, the playground is looking for a total of $21,500.
Well, when I read this agenda, proposal, and then not even any paperwork in here, I, I was the one that had to tell the three adjacent neighbors. I said if there wouldn't be a final vote today, it's in the budget. And so I guess I'm a little disappointed that I was wrong. And I think as long as we've got to wait for the attorney to make up, to tell us, then-
I can't wait. I have to order by the end of the meeting. All right, the price is going to go up $6,000.
Ted, I understand that Dave, in the past, how we've had some issues going on items where we didn't have the proper paperwork in hand. And that is up to you to decide what you want to do. Although I have a standard position, and other people's positions for a number of years too, from time to time. So I think you just have to vote in consents. But it is on agenda, I am, it is on the agenda, and the board can vote on this. Plus a lot of recommendations.
Let me just make one comment. The owner's rights have to be guaranteed. I tried to, and I think everybody in the community will respect everybody else's rights. When Bob Levine was here, he put things in perspective. My kids, his kids didn't have a place in the park to go to. Who was that person now? Mary?
I, that's, I got one more item that I-
What I'm trying to say is- What I'm trying to say is that if a child was blamed, the child was hit by a loser killed.
Stoward.
Stoward.
Okay, we understand the position. Any other item or any other discussion out here? Any? Vote all, please.
Rusty Kalerman.
Yes.
Rusty Fletcher.
Yes.
Rusty Brown.
Yes.
Rusty Kaiser.
Yes.
Rusty Rodder.
Yes.
Rusty Cox.
No.
Okay, motion carries.
Next item is to, proposal to install water at the Deer Park pound center baseball field for proper maintenance purposes, doing all the other things that are necessary to maintain this field properly. We've had a ton of the water this spring, and that certainly hasn't been our problem. We've been created and how we got the water off the field down to now using cushions from old sofas to get the water off, earth based at home play, but that's where we have. The water, as I understand, did that give you a candidate? Yeah. You see, you see the proposal to install water with the permits and material and labor and everything, and I submit that we go forward, install this water. When it gets into the dry season, we're going to need it. It appears that I'm going to have another revenue source after June, July, August, and then September for additional revenues. I'm going to be in that field that currently are unbudgeted, which may help us in some of the things we had earlier, that we might get that field, rent it out, lease out some more. I never need the water in that particular season to be able to maintain it otherwise it's going to fall apart. And that is something that we were ahead and budgeted, and now I'm asking you to go forward and spend it. President, call for a revision.
Did you get home court bids on this, or was it just one?
I, this is not, not at all.
It's just the one we received, it's from last year's. And this is just a carryover from the contract from last year.
Okay. Does anyone have an issue with what we've done here? We have multiple bids. I asked you to go ahead with the work, correct? This is a carryover.
Yeah, HG Stringer is a licensed plumber, and that's one of the criteria for, we have to get a permit through the village of paddle time, would be the next step.
All right, non big contract, they're part two, so even though they were both, they were big last year.
Yeah, so it was-
Yes, it is.
Even though it's under $10,000, it's only two percent.
So is that your motion for $2,200?
That's the total cost, right, Tom?
That's the cost for the installation of the yard hydrant. There is the additional cost for the permit. I estimated about $500 for the cost of the water meter and permit fees as well.
So we can watch the other law. Any further discussion?
We have $9,000 budget.
Not hearing any further discussion?
Second.
Move second. Vote all, please.
Rusty Fletcher. Yes. Rusty Brown.
Yes.
Rusty Kaiser.
Yes.
Rusty Rodder.
Yes.
Rusty Cox. Yes.
All right, we've already, we talked about the last item they had to do with the parking that I really have to defer till next month, till I have a conversation with the attorney regarding that matter. Other than that, sorry, I just got to do the right thing.
What is educational government?
Correct.
Oh, it worked out fine. It's not weird. There's no track.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We made that.
I think it's under the pressure.
I'll touch base.
Yeah, I'll take over if you have to.
Pull yourself together. Take care, Joel.
Listen, honest to you, people don't realize this, but your officer, Jay Selber, someone doing the 4,000 hours of all this, he went and did it out, he missed them, but the presence he had on Cuba Road, on Rainbow, and you got a couple of speed, nice speed traps set there, put that way. It was good to see that. And then the people come up to me and they complain about Deer Bath, and I notice you have 10 steps on Deer Bath. That's excellent.
Now, we've been trying to step up in the area where we have, because I'm working with our market sponsor, basically that our Deer Bath is pretty small, finished out, and it's been a speed up, and it's not been able to sustain it. So then we put out, but we set up this one, I do, we had one, there, it's real.
All right, everyone ready to start again?
Yeah.
Who's hitting group C? All right, ready to, ready to get that here. Village Attorney?
Thanks, President. I'm in ADA. The ordinance meant in the village code regarding accessory uses comes to you from the planning commission of the field, who have been working on this for a year or so. We can have a motion.
Okay, you motion approved ordinance regarding accessory uses.
Still move.
I can move, second by trust.
Discussion.
The ordinance amends two sections of the existing zoning code to revise the definition of accessory structure or use, and then revise the regulations pertaining to accessory structures and uses. This is an issue that had been troubling the ZDA particularly for some time, because they kept getting requests for variances for accessory uses that didn't really fit within the definition of what variance is for. So after several of these awkward cases, the planning commission and ZDA got together, began a series of meetings, and this is the end product, and comes to you after a public hearing trial with the planning commission with a recommendation for adoption of the ordinance to amend the accessory use sections of the zoning records.
Working, discussion.
All right. Oh, section four, did I misunderstand or am I not sure? 120 square feet gross makes a, or 10% of gross floor area of principal structure. My house happens to be around 3,000 square feet, so I could have a 300 square foot accessory building, and I'm surprised by that. That wasn't my understanding of where they were going, but-
It's 120 square, shall I see 120 square feet gross floor area if accessories will be residential use, or 10% of the gross floor area includes construction of accessories in the other use? There are certain kinds of commercial uses, for example.
Okay, so residential is the key with that, right?
Yes.
Thank you. That explains it.
Any other questions?
So I remember about this time last year, there was a lot of concern in Joe's subdivision about the particular homeowner that was trying to claim the pool. Does this, how does this either help or hinder him? Does this make it easier to justify the sizes for the various structures that go on the pool and where they are located a lot?
It takes the pool house out of the variance process completely. Probably the difficulty with that, with that case was maybe we were trying to deal with it as a variance, but it didn't, doesn't really fit in the context of the concept of variance. Swimming pools and, and in-ground swimming pools, pool houses, and all equipment and ordinances thereto are in fact accessory uses, but they shall be permitted only pursuant to special use. So rather than having to shoehorn this pool house into the variance process, will the planning commission be able, the next time something like that comes up, to deal with the special use process, which is much more flexible?
Okay, I'm glad that Dave remembered that particular example, because that's really, how come, and I think that any other examples of the last year and a half that you could point out? Now, like, I was basically looking for the various minutes to see the thinking and the precedent of the zoning board, it's not here, see? Okay, because, you know, sometimes he would give a little indication of how they felt, and I think that's what the minutes used to provide too. Now, since I went back to the October 1, 2007, which says that the zoning board is frustrated with this and that, what did you do regarding here, it said if someone wanted to buy, make a big garage for antique cars that later could be sold, and another person would use- Now, for, since I went back to the October one, two oh seven, um, which says that the zoning board is frustrated with this and that, what did you do, um, regarding here, it said, um, if someone wanted to buy, make a big garage for antique cars that later could be sold, um, and another person would use the building for a commercial purpose? How did you, how does that fit in with the new, uh, the new paper?
Paragraph five on page two says that total garage spaces, whether the garage is attached or detached from the house, shall not exceed the number of finished bedrooms in the principal structure.
Okay, so that.
And no detached, no detached garage shall contain any sleeping or cooking facility, so it couldn't be used for any kind of residential purpose.
Um, well, now, all right, so, okay, so they might have five or six garages, five or six cars, because I guess we did have one of those about three years ago, I don't know how big it was. Um, the thing is that, um, if they have a, a five or six garage item, it could be turned into a commercial, uh, a home business, but then after a while, it was sold.
Well, the garage could not be used for a commercial purpose in a residential zone. Uh, if, if, if within the home occupation definition, I guess that might be possible, but I can't imagine anything involving a garage, working a garage that would fit within the home occupation definition.
Okay, I'm not real familiar, all I know is that in my old neighborhood of Limpin' Bay, there were two garages that were made to the offices, whether it was one insurance and one was plumber, so whatever.
That would be dealt with by the, the prohibition on commercial use in the residential district unless it falls within the scope of what's permitted in the home occupation, and what you just referred to, real estate office or whatever would not be permitted as a home occupation.
All right, any further questions?
I have one more, Scott.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the zoning board, what is their, what is their take on this report, or, you work with them, I'm sure, right?
Oh, yeah, with the planning commission and the CBA, they'll serve a change of meetings, uh, and this is the product of, uh, work by, by those two groups, you were hearing from one year, because there are several conditions.
I would say though, it would be, it's some of those same things, there were a couple of CDA members who wanted larger than a hundred and twenty square feet, don't, don't read like.
A lot of disagreements.
Right, exactly, but the consensus was to go with a hundred and twenty feet.
And in general, they're all really behind us.
That's what I really wondered too, was it unanimous, or was it a split vote? It wasn't unanimous.
It wasn't unanimous, okay. All right, further discussion? Not hearing any?
Well, does, wait a minute, does this have anything to do with the, um, uh, you know, these tool sheds, you know, we went through a shed, uh, a design, um, about two years ago.
Scourge of so, shares come under scourge of so.
All right, so where is?
I am before.
Is it number, okay.
Page two, just like I'm before.
Oh, now, I did not go look in my pile of papers, the height of that, that might be, uh, number two on the landscaping type, um, did, had we said before that it, does that correspond at fifteen feet to what we had said a couple of years ago?
I have more collection that was said two years ago.
Oh, and where's this shed paper?
Officer, high construction, Andy's?
Yep, it's in session two.
Session two. The height fifteen feet.
Yeah, but then, where was, I, I guess I, I am sorry.
Do you tell me what was said two years ago, I can tell you what it's saying.
Regrettably, I didn't take the time to look at.
Well, Pam, I can tell you the reason. I don't know about that, but the question, the way this was worded this way, is some people were concerned about, you know, where on one side if they have it, um, if the ground is not leveling, oh, yes, there, thank you, that's the word, that it would be a lot higher than fifteen feet from a different angle, whereas, you know, from the front it might only be fifteen, but if you view it from the back, it would be like twenty or twenty-five, so that's why this is worded this way, so it won't be more than fifteen feet from the lowest point.
Well, I just hope that this ordinance agrees with whatever shed ordinance that we'd be asked one or two years ago, or this is the updated one.
Well, this will replace, this will replace accessory use, or accessory use ordinance, this will be the new ordinance.
It doesn't, it doesn't intend to agree with something that supersedes, incorporates, and works the most, a lot harder.
Okay, well, I guess we'll see when the questions come up.
Sure we'll find out this.
I'm not, I'm not.
Not hearing your roll call, please?
Cussey Front?
Yes.
Cussey Kaiser?
Yes.
Cussey Roger? Yes. Cussey Hug? Yes. Cussey Call?
Yes.
Cussey Scratcher? Yes.
Motion carries. I am number D.
D is the ordinance granting liquor licenses to Tokyo Saki Grill at twenty-three thirty, Deer Park Boulevard.
All right. And the motion, man?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Move in second, can we have representatives here? Welcome again. Any comments today? No comment, okay, um, may I ask you a quick question? Why does it look like you're?
Um, I was a little confused, maybe I'll need to.
Jim? Okay. Any questions regarding the ordinance?
I just want to say we won't be, uh, the liquor commissioner will not be, uh, granting the liquor license, uh, until we have the seal from the village, from the health department, laser fire protection district, DDR, and satisfaction of the ambassador.
All right, no questions? Roll call, please.
Cussey Kaiser?
Yes.
Cussey Hug? Yes. Cussey Call?
Yes.
Cussey Scratcher? Yes. Cussey Front?
Yes. Motion carries. Was there a motion? I started guys who made motion and I was on second. Okay, very good. Very good. I just, very good. Okay, so.
Uh, I have a meeting to see, there's a contract, it's the agreement between Village of Deer Park and Red Speeds Illinois LLC for automatic red light traffic law enforcement system. This, uh, contract mirrors one which was entered into between Red Speeds and Village of Kildere.
Okay, need a motion for approval?
I approve Red Speeds Illinois LLC, contract between, um, Red Speeds and Village of Deer Park.
I'll second if I can have a first comment.
Yes, comment.
Just a question, I remember, um, Jason Chorsey saying that if there were months where our revenue did not meet the expenses, that there would be no charge, and from my reading of this, it says those charges would be rolled over to the next month, that will never have a deficit, but, so we will still be charged, you know, even if we hit, yeah, it will keep accruing. I guess that's not the way I understood, I thought we were forgiven every month until we made a profit, that's not true.
I've got one.
Yes.
Chief Lee, what do you think? Does this, this affects our law enforcement, is this good, bad, or different, or what do you think?
I'm in favor, uh, and it does several things, it allows us to put somebody at an intersection where there's a, a very quantifiable safety issue twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and we don't have to put an officer at jeopardy, and other traffic in jeopardy by trying to pull traffic over for violations of the, of the red light, uh, while there is heavy traffic areas, so I think it's win-win for everybody at this point, so I'm, I'm very much in favor of it. So, so what do we say about the cost rollover, is that misunderstanding, or would you say a little bit, or?
A little bit.
We, we, so, what do you say?
We'll never be negative, I mean, they won't ever charge us until we start making money, but they'll, they'll keep, you know, the tab keeps rolling until we make money, and then we'll have to pay on our previous debts.
Now, what you're feeling, you got.
No, 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 the paragraph, cost neutrality on paragraph twenty-three is cost neutrality, as referred to in municipality, as a municipality shall never have a capacity more than the tank truck has received. Then the next sentence goes on, paragraph five A, supersede is cost neutrality, and paragraph five A is one for collections, um, my understanding is that it's extremely unlikely there's a number of, and do you agree?
My understanding and my research is that that's the case, I, uh, as an example, I think, uh, Village of Lake in the Hills put a red speed camera up at one intersection, one direction on Randall Road, and I think they had written five hundred tickets in the first two months. So they, they easily made that, and Randall Road at that intersection does not have the violation rate that we're seeing at Rand and Lake Cook.
Where would you put it at then, when you talk on the, um, on both sides, or?
We would do all four legs.
All four legs?
That would be my recommendation.
And they will determine, basically, on their analysis.
Right, they'll, they'll.
They choose, they'll decide, or they don't think there's an obligation, they'll say no.
Right, they'd like to see a minimum of twenty violations a day, uh, for a leg to put a camera in there, uh, just as an example, when we did Rand, when, uh, the violation rate there was ninety a day per leg, and I'm sure that you're going to see much more than that at Rand and Lake.
Yeah, especially on westbound and, and twelve.
That's my question, when you say a leg, I, I see people all the time not stopping to turn red, not to, to turn right on red from Lake Cook.
That would be a violation.
So the camera will watch both people going straight west on Lake Cook as well as people turning?
Yes, they, they have the capability of covering that wave up to six lanes of traffic.
Oh, really?
And, and monitoring that, so if we do four directions, east and westbound Lake Cook, and north and southbound Rand, that would be a total of four cameras. But, um, what if you're legally in the intersection, when the light turns yellow, and then you turn, is that a violation or not? No, uh, there's, there's, first of all, there's a criteria that we set up ahead of time with them, before they'll even send it to us as a, as a violation, and that criteria basically is a, a fixed speed that they have to go through past the white bar, if they're up to and not at the white bar before the light turns red, and when the light is red, they're past the bar, then, uh, that will be marked as a violation, and then all of those violations get reviewed individually by our police officers to determine whether or not they are in fact true violations. So there's a, there's a human interaction by them, and there's also, it's also vetted by a sworn police officer before it's tagged as a violation. So you found ninety violations a day at one in Rand? Ninety-six, but it was coming.
Wait, you mean, if they were, when you say the violations, they were past the white line and going through on the red, ninety?
They were prior to the white line when the light turned red, and they were past the right, the white line after it turned red, or they failed to stop to make a right turn, uh, right turn on red, they just scooted around the corner.
You mean, they, they slow down and?
Right, stop is stop, if they have a cessation of movement.
I can, I can imagine the slowdown incurred, turn, or I can imagine that.
Any other questions? Uh, your name, roll call, please.
Cussey Hug? Yes. Cussey Call?
Yes.
Cussey Scratcher? Yes. Cussey Front?
Yes.
Cussey Kaiser?
Yes. I'm really firm, so, yeah, motion carries. Uh, move on to my reports then.
Okay. I would have chief Louie, if there's any other.
Oh, okay, chief, I would suggest, that's my suggestion, and, yeah, they said a couple of months before, I think all of our. There's anybody, any questions?
Yes. Yes, sir.
By the way, chief, thanks so much for showing up to the meeting, we just looked at. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to ask you how, how things are going on Long Grove Road, I, I drive along that road, and sometimes I'm pretty fearful, uh, the way the traffic goes, sometimes there're like passing cars, um, things like that. You're just like, ah. Well, I think, I think overall, uh, from the time that we started, uh, the contracts here, we've seen that there has been improvement, uh, there, there's always room for more improvement, and, and Long Grove Road is one of the places, as you see in the step detail, that, you know, it does have a, a larger percentage of, of steps, uh, run, and also it's, it's good for a larger number of tickets, so, um, we, uh, we are keeping track of, of Long Grove Road, and, and, uh, we do patrol quite heavily. So, so the, um, the revenues that we got from tech, traffic tickets, I thought it was down last year from the year before? Yeah, probably was, it was everywhere, uh, there's more, there's some free support costs coming out of these, uh, traffic tickets, uh, you know, we, out of a seventy-five dollar traffic ticket, I would say two-thirds to three-quarters goes back to the court system. We see between eighteen and twenty-three dollars out of a normal, normal traffic ticket. So, so that is an indication that you're catching less, you know, violation rate? No, I, I think that the, uh, our, our ticket, uh, the number of violations we write, you know, uh, and the amount of money that we're getting from the courts doesn't seem to have any correlation, and, and we've never been able to really get a good handle on it. So, and we're in the same position, we feel there too, you know, we're, we're writing more tickets, we're getting less money.
I think we will be having that issue.
No, that's one of the things that we will have control, full control over that, you know, there's not, the court system is not involved in this, and, uh, and I think it'll be a better use of our enforcement. How is, um, how are things looking on Deer Path Road and Cuba Road and Rainbow Road, which are some other high-traffic areas? We're, uh, we're running details fairly early, I know we've hit a couple on, on Rainbow Road, I think we finally got one eat out on Deer Path Road last month, out of, out of the step details, uh, we, we do get, still get a lot of complaints from residents on the south part of Deer Path, you know, and we're, we're maintaining our patrols there, um, and we do, uh, we do try to give everybody the time that's, that's required based on, you know, the, the need and what we're seeing in the way prevailing traffic.
Yeah, just, we have to dig examine about traffic fines, because I did look at, um, Kildere's audited financials that they sent over at the end of the year, and Kildere's traffic fines seem to be a lot higher than, um, Deer Park's, and I'm just wondering, is, is it clearly demarked on Rand Road, which, you know, if they're on one side of the road, Kildere gets the revenue, and Deer Park on the other, or how did, how did the officers decide on Rand Road?
Basically, the location of the initial event or the violation, um, it's, it's where the, the violation's written for, I, I went to that too, and, uh, I think part of the issue is we do have a little more truck, traffic, truck overweight enforcement that happens off of Route twelve, uh, up on, on Route twenty-two, especially because they come off of the Tri-State's all the way, and they're always overweight coming down twenty-two, because only giving five miles from the Tri-State, that's eight point nine to Quon Road, and they try to make it in the industrial parks, or we did quite a few of those out there, there's nothing really of a similar instance with that, and our truck violations could average, you know, somewhere between eight hundred and nine hundred dollars of overweight. So.
And we don't have any weight, by, weight limits on our roads that don't.
Well, uh, basically, Lake Cook Road and Quon Road are both, uh, in your, in your area are still designated as eighty thousand pound roads, as is Rand, the only one that we would really see that, that isn't, is Ela, Long Grove, or Long Grove Road to Cuba, and there's, there really doesn't have much truck traffic, and those are seventy-three thousand pound roads. So there's a whole different set of rules for eighty thousand pound roads, as far as what they can carry on any chance. Do we have any control over the designation of the number of pounds, do we? No. Have changed? No. If you change it, if you drop it down from a five hundred dollar ticket to a seventy-five dollar ticket, and then we're right back to having speeding tickets again, and, and except that you have to take them on land. And, and except that you have to take them on land.
I think one time in the last thirty days, you've been much more visible in the community than you have before. And maybe I, suddenly I took it for granted, but your police department was all over for the last couple of weekends, which is good.
We, we try. Thank you. We, we try, and it's something we want to, to do, to promote every, everywhere. I know we've, uh, you know, some of the weather issues earlier this, this year, you know, tied us up pretty good, but, uh, you know, we, we try to do, you know, the best job that we can. I think we do a pretty darn good service for, for both towns.
Steve, are you seeing any particular crime patterns, like robberies in certain parts of the village or anything like that, or is it all pretty much random, scattered?
Uh, typically, what we're seeing is, um, they, they run in spurts where we'll get an area that'll get hit with some vandalism, and leave some kids to go out on a weekend and take out a bunch of mailboxes or stuff. I know there's been issues, and I talked with trustee Thrun about the GPS units, you know, people still leave their cars unlocked, they still leave their garage doors unlocked, you know, especially when the kids are, are out and ready to, to party, you know, it's ready, ready cash to go in and grab a set of golf clubs and take them to play against sports and get some beer money. That's, you know, that's just been like that for years everywhere around here. You know, it's not just our town, but it's, you know, pretty much the entire North West suburban area. As far as serious, uh, serious crimes go, really, we've had a, a couple of crews that have been working burglaries. I think we got one of them, um, we were involved in a, in a multi-jurisdictional investigation on electronic thefts, and believe that we got that, uh, one of the, the crews in custody down in Markham, but they had done an AT&T store in the, um, post store, uh, about two years ago, and, um, we finally got, got him caught. But our investigators worked that case with about twenty other jurisdictions, running rolling surveillance on these guys for, you know, about eighteen months before we're finally able to get him, you know, into where we could tag him or something.
Any other questions?
Chief, I'd like to thank you for staying with me tonight, and, uh, you know, I, I think we have a partner doing a outstanding job for Deer Park, and we appreciate your service.
Thanks. Uh, one thing, this is, um, National Seatbelt Enforcement and Reminder Month, and we may or may not have gotten a grant from my dad to run or not run a seatbelt detail either in or outside of this village sometime this week or maybe not. So are you sure that you're all buckled up?
So, so Chief, so Chief, I've been noticing that, that you and your fellow officers have been reminding us on a regular basis over the past couple of weeks.
Oh, yeah.
So things in a few places.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. General information, uh, should be getting some more information coming out soon in regards of Canadian National, Ray Road, and responding time to their report, you know, Canadian National's trying to speed program on, uh, that the environmental study done quicker time underneath that hearing, have time for you. There's going to be some additional counter coming up, getting more information probably this week. Uh, there's a letter from a code regarding the village's contribution. And they're waiting for his contribution of, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we don't have to pay something back to him?
No.
Okay, well, that's good. Uh, there's a proposal from Cuba Township Highway Commission regarding the animals' snowplow contract. I think we may have put one in twenty into the budget, they think they're at a hundred and fifteen. Any questions in regards to that?
Question?
Yes.
When we got our letter from you at Township, they stated they couldn't do it because they didn't have enough equipment specifically. I think they had two, two dump trucks, two and a half tons plus five pickup trucks to do the call to sex. This proposal has two, I presume, pickup trucks, not pickup trucks, but dump trucks, two and a half tons, only two pickup trucks. Now, either, either Township said we needed five to properly do the village.
Do they, so, so we dedicated it to Deer Park or that's their whole fleet?
No, that's not for all deal.
No, but.
No, a lot of them.
No, we're talking about you. We're talking about you. We're talking about you.
I, I didn't, I, I didn't know that this question Jim knows, but that was my question, that was my second question when you just asked, because if the call to sex group creates such a problem, you know, also time in which we should give, you know, the assets in the next spot. Because I can't remember what Hila Township, uh, what they said, except five pickup trucks stuck in my mind, but we needed those.
From what I recall, Hila's crews are a lot smaller than, than the Quon, a lot smaller than, uh.
In other words, the question probably was, did Hila Township give us dedicated crews like we got now? That's one question. If, if we get better service now, does that include the five extra vehicles, the, you know, the extra pickup trucks due to the call to sex? Does the call to sex a problem?
Well, one, Hila Township said they were no longer interested. Um, I understand these would be dedicated vehicles, or I don't know if we got that before with Hila, they used their crews, you know, district wide.
We'll try to say, you know, because I know where this is going, but if we have a contract and Hila says this is what we need, we should analyze that in relationship to the toll.
Well, you would not be approving tonight a contract. You would be, if you want to go ahead with this proposal, you'd be authorized in the village attorney, and I'd be working with them on the language, would model it after the existing contract right now. We could find out that information, but, you know, the one thing is, Hila Township has definitively said they are no longer interested. What you want is information on how does this compare with the recommendation of Hila in whether, you know, in terms of the complete size and number, as well as what's dedicated to this village versus.
Right.
Available.
Yeah.
I, I do know that I, I've talked to the Lake Barrington Administrator, I think Barrington Hills, and they said that the service was good.
Talk to them also. Any other questions?
No.
No, but I liked his offer of being able to do other things. I think we ought to investigate some of the other services that they're offering.
Right, we, we can do that, and also, in the past, Cuba Township works closely with, you know, Township, Township's too. I know even on the snowplowing, a lot of Cuba Township was doing, you know, some of the plowing on the far end, so they have a district working together.
But I would also urge us to have both telephone numbers. In other words, uh, at the end of the contract of the snowplowing, that was saying what it could do in the, uh, uh, roadways or picking up this and that, whether it was a tree or a dead animal, but was it going to be just the six months, no, uh, November to April fifteenth, or was it all year round? Because we already have something with Hila Township that we call them.
We call them and we give a charge to not really, based on the equipment and labor.
Okay, and so over here, it says, all right, so that this particular contract said they would do it, but is it only November first, April fifteenth?
I interpret that, um, paragraph, uh, under the contract for ice and snow during that time period, but that's what would have to the contract.
Right.
Well, they said, I don't know, they said they'll provide service outside of that range, but not as responded. I'm just reading, it's probably the same paragraph, during the term of our contract for ice and snow, we would also provide without further charge, dead animal removal and emergency removal. I think it's a good point, is it just during the snow contract period or through the five years? It's good, I've got the red start to look at.
Okay, okay, fine, so then you check out. Number two, uh, I must admit, Ben, I would like to see Hila Township be given first choice on all the items that they have done presently, but I know that competitive bids, uh, you'll have to, um, you know, give, ask Cuba, you know, what they could, what they would charge. But because I think most of, uh, the crews, most of Deer Park is in Hila Township.
Okay, so Steve, my overall recommendation would be to go with the first year with the, go with the snow and ice contract. I think there are some prices, I've talked to their supervisor, that we can approve on. Uh, one of the things, though, is right now Hila Township's familiar with a lot of things we do with our storm sewer maintenance work, they're familiar, we have an emergency, they know what rates to go out to check.
That's right.
So I'd say for the first year, you know, as we did in the previous section tonight, allow Hila Township, but that's something we'll definitely be looking at. They also have a sign shop, we could have signs done by them, and not have that set up to a, another.
Well, that definitely, you know, granted, there's going to be certain things they're going at or have a capability.
Trustee LaMarr knows, Todd Gordon has worked closely also with Township, so he's familiar with how they do things. Also, it might be something to look at in the future, um, with some patching equipment on the roadway that King Township has. You know, be aware of some things, and also with our jurisdiction, um, work for us among those, especially if they can do it, you know, during the winter season, so they use some cold patch, they can come in and do a complete ton of damage for us, so maybe that also. Any other discussion?
One question, but I presume it's best to be self-insured, is the time where they got, November first, April fifteenth? That's the same time as we got before.
I think April thirtieth was the Hila Township contract.
Yeah, that's not a problem, you just, you've got to recognize yourself insured at that time.
Well, it's part of negotiations too, we'd probably go to April thirtieth or ask that.
Okay, that's a good question.
Look, if you know the board, then go ahead and have the attorney work up a contract to work with Cuba Township in regards to the snowplowing contract.
Yes, you need a motion.
We'll watch on that. All right. Biagis? We have the honor of Biagis, a representative of Biagis here. What they're looking to do is request a different type of liquor license. Would you like to give us an idea? What, please?
Thank you. Thanks for giving the opportunity. I, I guess what?
Did Tony want to tell you your full name?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, first I, Tony Morab, I'm the management partner at Biagis in Deer Park. And what I just want looking to do is, the village to allow for permission for me to, on occasion, sell wines to my clients on a retail basis, and, and if I could back up, just to give you this scenario that I'm envisioning, I, I routinely host wine dinners and special events with wine at the restaurant, and oftentimes at the end of these events, guests will go up to me and request that they be able to purchase bottles, which currently I can't do with my existing license. So I, I guess that would be one scenario. Many of the wines that I do carry in the restaurant are what are called on-premise wines, which mean that they're not available in a retail shop, they're only sold to restaurants, and people come in, they see them, they can't, they don't know where to find them, and they also request from time to time that, hey, can you, you know, can you help me find out where to get these things? So there would be another application, but for the most part, it's, it's the wine dinner application and just being able to, I suppose, uh, work in an interpretation of my existing license to where on occasion I can allow guests to purchase on a retail basis.
You don't see this being a big part of the business? You're not.
No, I don't.
At the liquor store, they come in.
Oh, no, no.
And they're out.
If it's required, no, there, there would be no displays involved within the restaurant. This is just something that as I've built up, uh, you know, a client base over the last almost six years, and wine being a very big part of the culture in our restaurant, um, it's just, and, and with my followers to the wine dinners kind of growing, it's something that I'm getting quite a bit more requests for.
Any wine dinners you have?
Uh, but dozen or so. Yeah, roughly.
Do you see venturing into any other areas where you might need different type of licenses or not?
You know, I, I, I could see that, you know, obviously, I'm, I, I'm trying to look down the road and, and look for other applications, but for right now, it's just to satisfy, you know, those, those kind of in-house requests on a regular basis now. With, you know, the Hampton Inn coming in and back at me, uh, you know, things like that, I could see that, um, you know, is, if I reach out to those hotels for off-premise events and things like that, there could be an application where my, they might need me to bring wine there, or I might get requests from out of town, this is people saying, hey, can you deliver a couple of dishes over and what about wine? I could see that coming down the road, but for right now, I'm just looking to satisfy the requests that I have in-house.
And you could also recommend this facility too, if you are looking for an outside place.
I'm sorry, oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Right.
I've got a big painting of a lobby of the, of the bar by Lee Rattie.
Okay. Okay, uh, main question, that is, I assume, important.
Can we create a new class? How difficult is that to do? A new class of liquor license?
New class of liquor license requires an evidence.
So which one will I call on here, here, uh, I'm, I'm trying to figure it out.
I'm sorry, which one, what?
Class three, four, or five.
No, none of you will.
So what I need is a motion to create a new liquor license, or to, to correct the village attorney. You hear that?
No, we direct the village attorney to creating ordinance, creating a new class of liquor license. I didn't hear that.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we direct the village attorney to draft an ordinance creating a new class of liquor license which would accommodate Biagis on occasion selling bottles of wine for, to not be consumed on the premises.
Second. We're in a second. Any further discussion?
I'll, I'll just tell you that there, there are going to be applications and ramifications in this, and there may have some policy issues.
Like what?
Well, let me work on.
That's for next month.
This is not, this is not a done deal.
We'll see if we can do that.
Okay. Thank you, we're considering.
Can you, uh, walk up, walk up, please? Who are you a voice for?
I like to be able to talk to you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, we'll be there. Okay, thank you. For, for a group of appointments, the management reapoints, Frank Humber and Eric Lorenz, and motion for approval.
Don't move.
Questions?
They agree, Mr. Again?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Make the following appointments of, of board members already on the CBA, of Bill Michael and, and show.
Don't move.
Second.
We're in second, any questions?
Are they all willing, Mr.?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? And motion carries. Just wanted to do some clarification, last month we had an issue with Division Ten. Time review, we found out that Division Ten had never been made for that work, and I'd like to thank trustees who voted for that to pass that, otherwise we would have been in a, a legal lawsuit.
Well, we were in legal, in lawsuit, and lawsuit, and it's down.
Also, there was another follow-up, a couple months ago, in regards to attorney fees for the, the village. There was a comment made by a trustee that you can get a attorney, a village attorney for fifty-five dollars an hour versus the one ninety-five that Attorney Keller was looking for, and it was also mentioned that the information came from Baytown, and I talked to all the Baytown members, and the room erupted and laughed. There's no way that they believe that any good attorney can be had for fifty-five dollars. As a matter of fact, they made numerous comments that a hundred and ninety-five dollars was an excellent, very, 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 uh, outside of that, I have nothing else. Trustee Pelman? Trustee Kellerman?
One question on Division 10.
Yes.
When were the trustees notified of that?
It's not an email.
Yeah.
You even responded, asked for copies.
Okay, that was the first date?
That was when you, what, your name was still?
I probably did that to the board meeting last month.
Yeah.
Though I'm kind of, if there was legal action, when was that filed?
Why? Who told about that in the bill, weren't they?
Yes, it was, it was.
2007?
Beginning of the year, not late last year.
Yeah, everyone was informed of that.
And I sent out emails regarding the progress and also analysis, so that it won't be an application of the team. I discussed it when we opened the meeting.
Anything else?
You're saying that we were notified back in November, 2007, on this attorney?
Remember the exact date, I didn't bring that file, whenever it was filed, you'd be notified.
Because I can't do the normal thing. Okay, my next item, two things, one of which, I brought over the paying procedures, and on Division 10, I thought that Jim Peterson must provide copies and material waivers for August 2005, Pay Request 14, final waiver, which I'm going to get, and it'd be available to the board members upon receipt, I requested that information, and I was told that Treasurer suggested I talk to you on that, President Gifford.
Terry?
I don't have any waivers. Division 10, can we issue a copy of that?
No.
No, I'm very hard.
The original controversy came in because we thought we had a duplicate payment of $13,000, because they certification, application of payment, we had $13,000, it was listed for toilet flushes. Now, this is another $13,000. Okay, fine.
I just, I know I've had a conversation with Treasurer Stady about this, that it was coincidental that the amounts were both close to $13,000, but they were not identical, and I forget exactly the whole extent of our conversation, but it was indeed for two different things.
That could be.
It's in every description.
That could be, but that's why it says on here, Jim Peterson must provide copies and material waivers for August 2005, Pay Request 14. Okay, I think that, I'm going to have to daily electric get an invoice, is that, and rather than make a, keep this going after going, looking for documentation, I would suggest that President Gifford intervene in this. I contacted Mr. Peterson, who's obviously not here tonight, because I was going to try to talk to him before the meeting on these issues, because I do not think this takes time for our board meetings, but I do feel that as a trustee, I have an obligation to make sure certain paperwork is done, on Illinois municipal code. Now, I've been criticizing the fact that I'm not paying vouchers. I'm in this field, and, okay, the vouchers I'm looking for from Peterson, they go back to February, we've got, now we've got the vouchers for V, Farm, they go back to January, we're missing, I mean, I would strongly suggest that President Gifford intervene right now, set a meeting up, let me meet with Peterson, let's get this thing done, and keep bringing it up. Mr., President Gifford will say, well, it's a misunderstanding, well, I'm using your information to come up with this analysis, and I have the same documentation in here for three year meetings, same documentation, I don't think it takes three months to come up with invoices, if there's a communication problem, Peterson, I'll do it, you set the meeting up, and we'll do it.
I don't think you understand the process and how it goes, I understand, you know, your feeling on this issue, but as our attorney said, the project manager of the project, he has all the information, he needs to keep the information for his preferences, and then he will turn all the information over to the village by the time that the project is done, now we can contact Jim Peterson, and I understand your feeling that until you actually see the documentation, you're not going to go for anything, and that's your, your right, your privilege to do it.
It's nothing to do with payment, what I'm saying is that there's a definite possibility of duplicate payments.
There's a definite possibility that there are not duplicate payments also.
The documentation you gave me, and certain things stated there, I used that documentation, I have the document.
Last month on Division 10, you said there were duplicate payments.
I'm saying there was.
By further discussion and by further investigation, there was not duplicate payments.
Wait, wait, I did not, wait, wait, you're making comments that were not factual. Trustee Rodder had date documents, or the court page, under the court, the leads filed and all that, he made that presentation, I did not make that duplicate payment. I have never made a comment, I'm making a comment right now, because Trustee Rodder's not here.
On Division 10?
On Division 10, showing the notes.
Well, we'll do that offline, we don't need to sit here tonight.
I know that, but what I'm saying is that we still have questions, and we've got to answer these questions, if Peterson will not come, I'll go to him.
But Division 10, what payment, sir? Were you not just talking about Division 10?
I'm trying to say is that you go to, go to any of our subcontractors, we have search certifications of this, we have this, and that, we don't have this problem in paperwork, I want to get this paperwork done.
What paperwork are you referring to, Troy?
Okay, what I'm referring to would be a simple matter, if Peterson gave us a certification application of payment for our payments, that's in a contract we had, that's a contract that he was enforcing, and there was a certification application of payment for each payoff.
And I believe in every case in which there's been a payment authorized by the village board, we have received the appropriate documentation from Jim Peterson.
Question I have.
I mean, so in you, which, it's not, it's not useful for you to make these broadly based allegations that something is wrong, in which case are you, are you claiming that something was paid that wasn't properly offered?
For sake of rhyme, you've had this in your packet, I brought this up in July, I believe, 2000, last year, on 4/20/07, Daily Electric stated, we had paid them $127,200. This payment was $10,000. On May 23rd, Daily Electric states, we paid them $122,200, and they requested a payment of five. The previous document on 4/20/07, if you take the $127,200, plus the $10,000 of this payment, that, to my knowledge, equals $137,200. $137,200 is larger than $122,200 stated on May 27/07. I've asked for an explanation on that since July of '07.
From whom would you ask for the explanation?
Peterson.
So your question has to do with the arithmetic?
My question has to do with Daily Electric's arithmetic, yes.
Okay, so what do you propose that the board do at this point, I mean, given that all this has been paid, authorized by the project manager, Jim Peterson, and paid, what are you proposing would be done at this point?
You simply show me his certification application for payments for these, and I'd be happy, that's as simple as that. The comment you made is that he has prepared his certification, the application of payment for this, I concur, I'll gladly see those, to my knowledge, I've been waiting for him for a few months, that's all I'm after, I just wanted him to put his stamp on that he approved it, in proper format as the contract.
So that's the only one you're questioning?
I want someone, as a trustee, I want someone there to be accountable for the money which I'm supposed to.
You didn't answer my question, is that the only case in which you have any question to $123,000?
$123,000?
Whatever the number is, the day of the payment to a daily electric, is this the only issue that you're looking for clarification on?
No.
Well, what else is there?
I am not seeing an application, certification on daily electric, report of honor.
Well, you wouldn't necessarily see that, I mean, it doesn't come to you, sir.
No, but I thought that.
It comes to, from, from the project manager, who authorizes through the treasurer and village administrator, authorizes payment to be made, you don't, you don't give a real reason to have these documents.
The village would have this document.
What?
The village would have this document in their possession.
I would assume so.
Terry, do you have the, I believe this started in the.
When I would get the answer, when Clark was paid, I would get the certification that Clark got, or whoever, I don't know who received them off, but I had the certification.
He said, he said the same document would be coming from.
I didn't get all the waivers from every other subcontractor.
No, no, Terry wouldn't get the.
We're not talking about that, we're talking about, if the Petersons are issuing an application certification for the money paid on.
Well, you would sign off on the certification of Clark, so that they had no rights, and Peterson would sign off on all those.
No, we're talking about Daily Electric, some of these other ones.
I didn't get all.
That's my question.
We were paying Clark, I didn't need to know what, our subcontractor.
That's right, yeah, if the payment was made to Clark, for work done by a subcontractor, then what we, what Jim Peterson would be signing off on would have been the payment to Clark, we would not have been involved in the payment by Clark to Daily.
I concur.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yes, I know.
That's why you wouldn't have seen it?
What I'm just trying to say is that if we have an architect, we're supposed to certify payments, there is a form, an application, certification of payment, it is designed by the architects association, that's what we're looking for.
That's one way to do it, that's not the only way to do it, I don't know whether those forms were used by Jim Peterson in these cases, or whether he was signing off on a request for payment from, by, by Clark, but they would serve the same purpose. I mean, you may be asking something that doesn't exist.
Your cell phone.
Yeah. Because it may not exist, because they may not have been using that, the AIA forms, I don't know, but what Terry's telling you is that she got Jim Peterson's signature on every authorization to pay.
I believe for most of the board, if not majority of the board, that they believe the numbers that Jim Peterson are giving to Terry and the ones that Terry are handing to the board.
We're having trouble, trustee Kellerman, understanding what it is you're driving at, because you're making very vague suggestions that something is missing, but you're not sure what it is, and somebody should go out there and find it.
No.
Until you can tell us what it is that you think is missing, what, we won't have any idea what we're looking for, and it could be that what's really going on here is that you have a misunderstanding of the process that was used.
All right, one second.
Do you want to do this offline, or do you want to keep the board waiting for you?
What I'm saying is if we signed a contract with Clark, in the agreements we had subsequent to Clark, then I presume the same contract would apply to those people as applied to Clark, and when you were saying now.
So you're, what contracts are you referring to subsequent to Clark?
Pepper, Pepper supplied the documentation that I, that I thought was adequate to meet the contract, I'm overused against Pepper.
Thank you, Hammond, your memo is titled, "Re-village Payment Procedures," and if this discussion.
That's not what we're talking about.
Well, that's on these two pages, and if this discussion is going to result in some change in village payment procedures, where we're going to modify how Treasurer Stady is authorized to pay bills, or how we make cash dispersments, or some change in procedure is going to occur as the result of this discussion, then I say there's some validity to it, but if this is simply to beat the dead horse that we've gone over with, gone over 100 million times of the Beatty Farm, that was a unique situation where an outside contract manager has the records, I don't see that that is going to be an issue going forward with anything else that this board is doing, we've got payment procedures in place for everything else that we vote on, for every other cash dispersment since I've been on the board, I think we all agree that the Beatty Farm construction is done now, hopefully that was the last missing bill that we voted for tonight, I don't see the reason to keep going with this discussion, it's not going to end up, and we're not going to be making any changes.
Okay, let me clarify what I'm saying, Article 4, progress payments, don't cite waiver of leaving from the contractor in the form of, for the payment request, and individual modernized waivers from each subcontractor and material supplier included in that payment application, or pay pursuant, pursuant to prior payment's application.
Is this the contract that we have with Clark?
Yes.
Okay, so you're reading from the contract?
That, that's what the contract says, now, what issue are you raising about that? That's what I can't understand.
What I'm saying is that I thought that this information would be presented to the board.
No, no, it's never done that way.
You've been saying that for over a year.
You don't want to see all that paperwork, you'd be flooded with paperwork, if you had to look at all the payment requests from all the subcontractors that work on this place, there's, there's no reason for the village board to be involved in that process, that's what the project manager is for.
To answer my question, are you looking to change payment procedures going forward with current expenditures, or is this particularly focused on the Beatty Farm construction?
All I'm saying is that our contractors that apply to the excavating, that apply to the roads, we have certifications of payroll, we have all sorts of documentation, we get it, Pepper gave us the same documentation these other people did, the Beatty Farm appears to be the exception, Pepper has given us all the documentation.
Okay, so our payment procedures are to your satisfaction, it's nothing that we need to change going forward in other ways?
My question was not the payment procedures, my question was, are the payment procedures in compliance with the Illinois municipal code, or addressed in with the village attorney before the meeting? That was my question.
Let me add, I guess, her yes there.
I, I think we need a list, not a narrative, not a speech, a list, I would be willing I would be willing, we've gone through this so many times. Give us a list of the documentation you believe is missing. I don't want to analyze your analysis to determine, so I can determine what I think you're asking for. A, I'm looking for a waiver of lien from XYZ Electric Company. B, I'm looking for a certification for such and such a payment. C, I'm looking for this. If you can give us a list like that, I think the way you have analyzed your, um, analysis is bewildering to me, and apparently dishonest. That's my suggestion. Because we've gone through this again and again, and we just keep doing it every month, and we're getting nowhere.
I, I would be very willing to, if you were to give us a list, I would be very willing to, um, to work with Jim Peterson and try to pull together those documents. But your, your, what you've said so far...
We'll have that document tomorrow morning. I'll give it to, um, Mr. Connish. Mr. Connish will fax it to you.
That, that's, that's fine. I mean, but the problem is, is that what you've said so far is that you think that there's been something wrong going on here, and you want somebody to do it, do something about it.
No, I did not. I just asked for an application certification payment.
No, you're, you're insinuating that there's something going on. You're insinuating, been insinuating all along that there's something going on here that shouldn't have happened. The documents are missing because somebody got paid improperly. Otherwise, maybe if you didn't think that, why would you be asking all these questions? I mean, if it's, if it's just, if it's just a, uh, an obsessive-compulsive disorder, that's one thing. But I don't think, I don't think that that's what it is. I think that you think that there's something going on here, and you're couching all of this in, in a search for missing documents. Well, you've got to tell us what documents are missing here.
If you go back to the, I believe, the November board meeting, the board members voted that documents be provided to them so they can make a payment to Pepper Electric. That request still has to be honored. I received information from President Gifford on that request. The documentation I received then did not substantiate the board's ask for it. That scenario...
Yes, it did. I completely disagree. I got a whole package, Jim. Remember, we got a whole package. You forwarded, made copies and forwarded our information. Trusty Kellerman was at Clark. There's a whole big package.
That was a big package.
And that fulfilled the Jim Peterson's obligation to the board.
And, and apparently, the majority of the board felt that what they had been provided was satisfactory. Now, you may individually disagree, uh, with, with the majority, and for that reason, vote, uh, vote against payment or something. But the fact that you disagree doesn't mean that the rest of the board cannot vote in favor of it.
They can vote in favor of it. And let's not, I will give you a list tomorrow, and we'll go from there, because I don't have to deliver it anymore.
And I'm going to ask again, what is the point of the exercise that you're going to put everybody through? What are you trying to accomplish?
Do you have Jim Peterson issue a statement saying that it certified that these items were not due to the payments?
Which, all right, you tell us which items are not due to the payments.
I suggest us be very specific about it.
Okay, cool.
Because my analysis in the past has been, uh, raised more questions with your analysis than I could, I might, I was capable of understanding what you wrote.
Okay, no problem.
Do you have an update on the 2008 program, or was that covered with Todd?
No, it's covered with Todd. No, we've got most of the items done. The reason we had to go forward as fast as we did is because they're going to start working. We want to get, when we have all that heavy duty equipment here to expedite the work, we're not using it.
All right, trustee Kaiser.
Thank you, Scott. I just want to bring up a couple of items in my report. The first one is just a brief scan of the investment held on April 30. It shows that the village reserve of 1.723 came in above the projection that was used for the budget.
Uh, it is? No, not exactly.
Not exactly.
You got to take out the MFT fund and the Clark fund. So it's actually under by 1261,000.
Never mind. So it came in under. I apologize. I thought I did that correct for you. So it came in slightly under. And that, that in my mind is, is a, is a bit of a concern. What, uh, the other thing that I wanted to report as well, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Terry, but, but in general, at the end of the year, our expenses were about 15% over what we projected when we originally approved the budget. Fortunately, our receipts were 15% over as well. So, so, so even though we missed our budget, we pretty much covered it with revenues. I don't think we can take those kinds of things for granted. And, and as a result, what I'd like to do on a regular basis, and I'm thinking on the order of once a quarter, is to just give you and the rest of the board a report. This is, this is how we're doing in general, receipts and expenses, and point out particular troubled areas, so that we can discuss ways at which, ways in which we can try to bring the budget back into alignment. Solicit from the rest of the trustees, places where, if for instance, receipts are below projections, places where we can cut back and bring things back into line or whatever. And, and what we'll do is we'll try to prepare a standard report, uh, that, that we, that we bring to the board about every quarter. The other thing I just wanted to report was, was, um, in general, we're converting over to the, to the new software. So you'll see that in the cash dispersment detail, which is in your packet, it's slightly different format than what we used last year. And that's because it's generated from our new software. Expect to see changes in some of the other reports next month, because all the reports that you're seeing are for the end of last year. We may have some difficulty in matching up directly the accounts for this, this year, 2008 to 2009, with comparisons to the same accounts from the previous year, simply because we changed our chart accounts. So we'll try and guide the rest of the board through that, try to help, help the rest of the trustees understand where the changes were, and, and where the, where the correlations are.
Question. Your new system you have put in, I presume that you are setting up fund accounts for like the auditor has?
Yes.
Yes.
Therefore...
The software is made for fund accounting.
That's right.
It's actually a wonderful system.
This is, this is actually a better system in that regard than the previous one. It's a little bit more true to, uh, true to the guidelines that, that one might expect from an other.
Because I know it's been a concern, and the way the confusion is, do you have the roads and drainage?
So, Bob, I think we, we, we worked that over the past couple of weeks.
So we have a separate roads and drainage fund balance?
No, we're actually, we're actually going to proceed forward with the way it's set up now. We are contracted, we are required to keep MFT separate.
That's what I was saying.
Now, let me finish. And we really can't mix those funds with any other roads and drainage funds. So we were, we appreciate your input, and we can see some of the good ideas in there, but the decision that we made is we're going to proceed forward with a separate MFT, just as, just as it was at the time we did the budget.
MFT would require a separate fund. I concur with that. What I asked was, do we have an MFT fund, and do we also have a roads and drainage fund?
So again, um, we appreciate your, your comments on that, but the roads and the drainage are in the general fund now. The MFT is separate, and we plan on continuing that way going forward.
Okay, then, the auditor, the auditor does not have a roads and drainage fund?
The auditor is, the auditor is in total agreement with the approach we're taking.
No, Bob.
He doesn't have a roads and drainage?
No.
Yeah, the funds from, to fund those things come from the general fund.
Right. There's a special section, road and drainage section, which will be total. So there's no fund, because there's no revenue for road and drainage.
So, 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 Bob...
Buy a separate fund, there's no revenue.
It's, 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 we, we appreciate your inputs on this, and we, we definitely consider it. But the way we want to do it is exactly how we have it now. We, we definitely have the concurrence of the auditor, and, uh, that's that.
Okay, just looking at the final, are you able to tell the difference between the two?
Absolutely.
Okay, it's not like it's all...
No, we, we aren't, we aren't, we aren't trying to hide anything from the rest of the trustees. We, we want to make the whole budget process transparent as possible, and I think that was something you, you expected of us as well.
I just wonder how the conversion's going. Is it going well?
Oh, yeah, long run. Downward training at the beginning of the month, and then went really well. We're all right. We did all the changes.
Do you like the new system?
Yeah.
Terry was also speaking well about how the training was, that, that, that she learned the last through that, and had been able to apply it in the transition.
I think you guys are going to like, from next month, you'll get reports from the first month, although, so, it's just going to be a day, because it's one month, but I think, I think you'll like it. It's going to be different, but...
Still a chance, right?
Right.
Okay, anything else, Terry?
No, that's it. Thanks, Scott.
Okay, trustee Plous.
I'd just like to, uh, tell you that the solid waste agency invites you to, uh, you or the staff members to, uh, the, um, open house of their, uh, hazardous waste, uh, building. And I am driving up there. It's in Gurnee. It's on June 19th at 4:30 to 7:00. And so they'll have, um, I think, a barbecue. So if you're interested, one drive would be, I'd like that.
What time is it being said?
It's from 4:30 to 7:00.
Wednesday on that.
So she thinks that...
She thinks it's an ideal situation, and it's, it should work perfectly. It's up to the old Lake Zirr, it's, it's, pretty much what they want to do, is I think it'd be a great open situation for all communities. What we're proposing, putting that area, I think it's needed within the community, the assisted living. And Lake Zirr would be the only one to give the sewer and water, to kiss the land, I think, and, and, and...
So what's going with that, no Lake Zirr, and the proposal, the land, the, the...
What, what we're proposing now, we're not making any agreements. It's strictly a proposal. We're sitting down and talking. That land, which is just a little bit north of Brunswick Bowl, Cherry, is in Deer Park. They need sewer and water in order to do the assisted living project. We can provide, we can, we weigh the two costs of Lake Zirr, and so what I'm proposing to do is, working with Lake Zirr, you know, what, if we were to work it out, they, we would, they would annex the property. We need to, they would annex the property into Lake Zirr so they could give it sewer and water. But what we would want from Lake Zirr is for them to meet our quota of the Affordable Housing Act. Okay, so Deer Park will not have to build any affordable housing units within Deer Park. We would partner with Lake Zirr, and they would have the units within Lake Zirr, but we would be credited for it.
And, and the feeling from Janet is, is that that's within the law?
Yes, she wrote the law. Yeah.
Okay.
And she's, yeah, so she, she says this is exactly why she wanted that put into the state's Affordable Housing Act. So communities like ourselves, Barrington, or Barrington Hills, or North Barrington can work with neighboring communities.
Sort of pooling kind of concept.
Exactly.
But the governor still has to buy into the whole idea of operating some of them.
No, no, the units do not have to be under Affordable Housing. We can use some of Lake Zirr's apartment buildings.
Oh, really? Doesn't have to do anything...
It has absolutely nothing to do with the project itself. We can use, you know, homes within Lake Zirr, apartments within Lake Zirr, any of the units that are quote unquote deemed affordable housing. We can take a certain amount of those units.
Okay, I get it.
It has nothing to do, we wouldn't have the set site units for the, uh, assisted living. The third two are completely separate.
Would Lake Zirr have to add additional units to cover our...
We believe they're...
Or they have already an abundance of apartments?
From my understanding, not that they have an abundance of it, in our, the buildout of Deer Park is going to be so small, compared with what 95, 96% built out by now. There's a certain percentage, I think it's... This may not be correct, but we're looking at something along the lines, I think, of 15 to 20 units to meet our quota. So that, that's hoping that it'll work out, but Janet's the architect of this, and I thought it'd be advantageous to have Janet there sitting and doing this. She said this is ideal, this is exactly why they wanted this put into the law. Add to the other list.
Yeah, I, I'm glad that you're having that meeting, because I had certainly wondered myself. I am now concerned about the lease to four build, um, and Northwest, um, landscape people. There's a great big sign there, and I believe that that is the Deer Park sign. And do they have sewer and water there? Aren't they on set table?
Oh, well, they, we can't raise sewer and water there, because that is part of the quote unquote triangle.
It is part of, okay, so then they're hoping the same trouble, uh, same item, same problem.
Same cost issue.
That's, I mean, the water allocation and sewer, it's also part of that.
Well, that's good.
Any other questions along those lines? Okay, um, Howard? Just forgot to speak. Yep, you did it. Okay, great. Good work on that. Jim? Susan?
Um, I cast out some reports from the CTY network. Watched it, you did a wonderful job on it. On May 5th, President Gifford reported his first outgoing message, launching and testing the program. And, um, if you look to the second page that I cast out, you can see I, I sent, we sent that on May 5th. And then we resented again on May 5th, and on May 5th, you can kind of pick up, relating to households and businesses that didn't receive the call the first time either. There was nobody home, took up the call, there was no answering machines, you picked up the message, it went to the back line, um, or, so whatever we can just, this is through. And, um, if you go to the third page, you can see the individual reports that we get. We have 924 residential numbers, 289 business numbers altogether, and it shows, um, for the month of May, that 73% received the call, and 27% didn't. But this is just a, a very valuable tool for the village. We can use it for community outreach and border urgency situations, and we do interactive surveys, um, for instance, um, with the park situations. We could have done an interactive survey with those residents, just those residents in that area, to find out exactly what each one of them wanted with respect to their overall farm work. Yes, you could pick out specific addresses on Pacific Street, or a radius of addresses around. If we had a park that wanted to know the radius around, you know, three blocks, what, you know, people didn't, we'd do that way. Or we can send it to every single resident, or every single business, or all of them. But it's just an invaluable tool, and, um, I hope that everybody receives their test call, and everybody receives their call box. And you're definitely doing a good job.
Hey. Oh, wonderful, Scott.
All right. First take.
So, um, I hope you have a chance to leave this over, and the material that I cast out, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. One thing that we're going to tackle next is, um, putting together a protocol for using the system. You know, who gets to decide when I have to go out and send a message out. And, um, you know, if you, if you have ideas, the messages that you would like to go out to give today, yes, I have to go out and get them. And I guess, uh, so there, we have... And I guess, so there, we have a possibility to borrow a justice for you. Any other questions?
Thank you. Carrie, anything, Dan?
No, just for myself. Put me out here.
All right.
By 11. Any more prediction?
Need, need, okay, let's go.
All right.
Need a motion to approve the investments help report for April 2008, amount of $1,723,826.69.
No move.
Second. Move to second, Carrie, any changes to any of that?
No.
Okay, on favor?
All right.
Close, motion carries. I am allowed to approve payments from April 21, 2008 to May 19, 2008, for the amount of $221,180.75. And payroll in the amount of $18,739.49, for a total of $239,920.24. Any changes to that?
No.
No move. Second.
Move to second, discussion?
Yeah, just wondering, why are you breaking off payroll separately from that?
I was waiting for someone to ask that question. Because the software is all sold in modules and the payroll is totally separate module than accounts pay out.
Okay.
So, it's not done and it counts pay out, it's totally separate. So, it will kind of be, well, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Local plates?
Trusty Kaiser?
Yes.
Trusty Cox?
Yes.
Trusty Calrins?
Yes.
Trusty Cranger?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Motion carries, your motion to adjourn?
No. Second.
Move to second, on favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.